You're good at that, Stephen.
I didn't do that. Somebody else did that. Derek must have done that.
I may now. Keep that away from me. Hey, Michael. Bernice, hello.
You're muted, Michael.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi, Bernice.
Hi.
Hello.
George is over in the participant list, too. There it comes. That's George's high school graduation picture.
Hi, George.
Hi, everybody.
We we also we also have some people who are panelists, so I think just so that we're able to see who's I'm just not seeing how to move them to attendees at the moment. You know, people whose case is later.
Okay.
There's the court reporter.
I just moved her over.
Thanks, Claudia.
I'm sorry. I had a hard time getting on tonight.
No worries.
Hello, Donna.
Hi, thank you. You didn't start the meeting yet, did you? No.
No, not yet.
I was trying to call you, Rhonda. I'm glad you were able to connect. Great.
Thanks, Karen.
Hey, Donna. Claudia, are we expecting any more members?
I'm just checking to see my list here.
Michael's here, yes.
No, Mr. Cannonbaum never got back to me, so.
Okay, all right. Well, it's seven thirty-two. So and we're recording, so maybe we should start. Okay. I'll read the opening statement. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically by Zoom on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven thirty P. M. Pursuant to Section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently oh, gosh, excuse me, by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on December tenth, two thousand twenty-one, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov. Pursuant to Executive Order one oh seven, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically by Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of with the Clerk of Princeton. Well, sorry, it's written. Notice has also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay. Um. Claudia, do you want to call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Chen. Yes. Ms. Coulson.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Striver.
Here.
Mr. Cannonbaum. Mr. Stein.
I'm here.
Ms. Donna.
Yes.
Chairman Cohen.
Okay. All right, well, we have several administrative matters matters. The the first is the notice of special meetings, which Claudia distributed. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at it? And if there are any questions or comments? If not, let's do we have to do this individually, Karen, or we just vote?
I think probably we should just do them individually, but I think motion, you know, a vote by by a voice vote. We don't have to go roll call for all these things, but I think we should do them individually.
Okay. Yeah, I know. That's what I meant. We do have a roll call.
Right.
Okay, good. All right, if there are no comments, Claudia, can you call a roll?
You want a roll call on each one or just a voice?
I think a voice would be fine, so if you wanted to say all in favor, I think that's okay.
Okay.
All in favor of the the notice of special meetings? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Okay. The next is the charges. The charges, what is it called? Charges subscribers for agenda mailings. And that was sent out earlier by Claudia also. Are there any comments on that? If not.
Is there? There is a charge now. It's it's just going up or just curious?
That's twelve dollars per year forever.
Been like that for twenty years.
Yeah. Oh. I don't think everyone has ever subscribed to it either.
Oh, well. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right.
Oh, Claudia, did you want us also to add the schedule of regular meetings? I think you just you distributed that as well.
Oh, yeah.
I I think it was it was part of the those three resolutions. Yes, please. We need to adopt that, yes.
Okay.
Did you want to do that now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, Claudia distributed a list of the meeting dates, so if anybody has any comments on them, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. Okay, I think now we don't have any other administrative items on the agenda, so excuse me?
Minutes?
Minutes, that's what I was going to get to.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Minutes, so we have in your packets, we had the minutes on December ninth, two thousand twenty. So has everybody had a copy or an opportunity to read them, and are there any comments on them?
I move approval.
Okay, now do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Claudia, please.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now we have several resolutions. Just trying to get to them. The first is case number Z twenty-one dash oh four oh, two sixty-nine South Harrison Street, block eleven thousand two lot lot fifty-one in the E one zone. Copies were in your packet have are there any comments to the resolution? Questions, comments? If not, if someone would like to make a motion?
I love approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Claudia.
Who's second? I'm sorry.
Striver.
Okay. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is case number Z twenty-one dash oh eighty-seven, three thirty-eight Nassau Street, block thirty-four oh thirty-four point oh one, lot thirty-two. Again, in your package, are there any comments?
Actually, Steve, a revised version was circulated by email, I believe. If if you didn't receive it, what it says, the upper left-hand corner is second revised. If you didn't, I can easily identify the minor changes or the changes that were made.
I I do remember. You sent that out the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah, but wanted to identify the change, just so.
Okay, so if you look on page two, what we've done is remove the reference to trash enclosure, your setback there, it's because it's no longer needed. On page three, we clarified that the size of the parking spaces, there's seven of them along the property line. It's going to be eight feet by eighteen. All and then again, on page five, we remove the trash enclosure setback barriers. That again, on page seven, page seven also shows the change size would be parking spaces, and those are the changes that were made.
Good, thank you. Has everyone reviewed the updated copy or the original copy plus the changes and with the changes and that Karen has mentioned? Somebody like to make a motion?
I have one one question, comment, Aaron.
Yeah.
On on page eight, right at the end.
Yeah.
It says, in the event that such testing indicates that the desk will levels are noncompliant, the applicant shall install additional sound barriers and baffler.
Right.
Perhaps say in if it's in compliance with zoning, I mean, they I was thinking they can't just do what they want.
Okay. I mean, I I think that, yeah. Derek, if it turned out that the testing is not compliant, is that something that staff then would get involved in to continue to monitor, meaning you would review with the applicant, or what are you going to put then to? We could make them come back to the board, but it's it's more of a technical issue if it's not.
No, I I wasn't asking that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just asking the if they need to add additional bafflers and and enclosure and change it. It would still need to be compliant with our zoning.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's all I was saying.
Okay, absolutely. So like, so I think what you're saying is you want that to we would we could clarify to say accomplish compliance. And in a in accordance with the bulk bulk regulations, does that sound, would that work? Okay.
Wait, Michael.
All right, that would have to be reviewed by Derek, I assume.
I'll put you in the engineer I would bring in as well, so.
Sure.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have a second?
I I seconded it.
Oh, you did. Okay, thank you. All right, Claudia.
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next resolution is Z twenty-one dash oh seventy-nine, thirty-five to thirty-seven South Harrison Street, block fifty-two point oh one, lot one oh two. If you've reviewed the memo and there are no changes or comments, if someone would like to make a motion?
Love approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Claudia.
I'm sorry, who's second? Are you in catch-up?
Steve.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next resolution, two eleven Wine and Drive, excuse me, case number Z twenty-one dash oh seventy-eight, two eleven Wine and Drive, twenty-one Brilly Road, block eighty-four oh one, lot twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Comments?
I I don't know if the applicant's attorney is is on the line yet. He is going to be here tonight for a couple of applications, Mr. Kennedy. He had raised a question regarding the condition that the existing driveways, one of them, it's not in a compliant location anymore with this minor subdivision, and Derek's suggested condition was remove it. This is at the twenty-one rarely road look or relocated. And Mr. Kennedy had, I guess, raised the question. Is that necessary? Because I guess they feel that it doesn't really look like a driveway, and they're using it right now as a staging area for landscaping and contractors. I see Mr. Kennedy, so I don't know if you want to speak to that, Ryan?
Uh, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Casey. Yeah, just the the clarification would be that the the testimony at the hearing on the driveway of sorts and that that side, that twenty-one really is not, there's no curb cut there, but there is a kind of path of sorts that is worn into that back area that's used by their landscapers. And the the testimony would be that it or was that that would be removed ultimately when that back lot was developed, ever were or sold. And our recollection was the testimony whether it would stay kind of as is until then, because it is from time to time a convenient place for the landscapers to get to the the back of the property.
And it's not a formal driveway. I'm just I don't want any rights conferred by this approval, you know? If it's not a formal driveway, do they need it to access their property, or I mean, or is it for the construction of the?
No, this is this is the essentially the what looks like it would have been a driveway to the undeveloped lot in the back that now, you know, perhaps crosses the corner of of the developed parcel with the lot line change. It is not needed to get to the property, that the entire rest of the property fronts to Brilly Street comfortably. It's just that, you know, they may never actually sell the lot or 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 construct a house there, and there's the the our direction was that the the condition was that we would do that when it was sold or or developed, put a driveway in a proper compliant location rather than build a driveway now that's not necessarily used for it by anybody.
Um. I mean, I guess a new driveway would have to be done for the new house. I wouldn't accept that driveway, so I guess I'm all right, Karen. I mean.
All right, so then you mean we what we would add to that is, I think it's condition number two on the last page, page six. So I guess we would add after the words of relocation to a compliant location for post lot seventy-three point oh two upon the sale for
Yeah, that's good.
Improvement of twenty-one rarely road. Suppose we add that, and then we'll also keep subject to the approval of the zoning officer as well. Would that work?
Yeah, it works for me.
It works? Okay.
Thank you.
Our board members comfortable with that?
I would think.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, if there are no other comments, if someone would like to make a motion?
So move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Claudia.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next case is doesn't quite have the on a resolution, Claudia, just says Z twenty-one dash. But it is. I'm sorry, Derek.
It's oh nine two, if you want the case number, sorry.
Z twenty-one dash oh nine two, okay. Seven Hamilton Avenue, block twenty-six point oh one, lot lot five. Are there any comments on the resolution? If not, if someone would like to make a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you.
I seconded.
Thank you. Claudia.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next resolution, Z twenty-one dash oh ninety-six, seven Castle Howard Court, block seventy-seven oh one, lot twenty-four. Any comments on the motion? If not, if someone would like to make a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Well.
Stephen, was that you?
No, but I'll second it.
Oh, was that you, Jim? I'm sorry, I just you flinched, Steve. Okay, Claudia, thank you, please.
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, our last resolution is case Z twenty-one dash oh ninety-five, one sixty-six Linden Lane, block seventy-three oh two, lot seven.
So.
Second. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now on to the hearings. Our first hearing is case number Z twenty-one dash oh ninety-seven, forty-four Prince William Court, block seventy-seven oh one, lot thirty-one in the R five zone. Karen, is everything in order?
It is. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay. Derek, would you like to read your memo? I guess you got everybody.
Yeah, Mr. Bridger, do swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Thank you. Good evening. The applicants, Daniela Bonafetta Cabra and Ashwin Cabra are the owners of forty-four Prince William Court. It's located in the R five zone in the former Princeton Township. They are seeking a floor area ratio variance to permit the construction, reconstruction and enclosure of a swimming pool, and they see two variances requested to permit a deviation from the required sidewall articulation in exception to the neighborhood character ordinance, section ten B two fifty-five point two subsection C two. The subject lot is not complying with respect to the required one hundred-foot butt frontage and width. The existing is ninety-eight point nine. And it's not complying with the impervious coverage requirement of twenty-nine percent. The existing is twenty-nine point six. The applicant intends to demolish the existing swimming pool and reconstruct it and close it in exception to the required floor area. The proposed pool enclosure will exist, will reduce the existing impervious from twenty-nine point six to twenty-six point nine percent. The F A R in this zone is twenty percent, and the proposed F A R after the addition of the enclosure is twenty-two point three percent. They need a variance for that. As you're aware, the F A R is a D variance, must be approved by five members of the board and the they're requesting C two consideration under the bulk variance for subsection ten B two fifty-five point two, which C two limits the length of any sidewall of a structure to forty feet. Such wall may extend beyond this length by stepping in or out two feet. The maximum length of a wall, or the minimum length of a wall is eight feet. The proposed wall does have some articulation, but does not extend to the full height of the wall. If you have any questions, be glad to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who is going to present? Mr. Kennedy, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Cohen. If we could, there's one other member of our team, Ron Berlin, our architect, who I think is still in the attendee room. If you could bring him over as well, I'd appreciate it. But as Mr. Bridger said, my name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee. We're here tonight to talk about a bulk variance and a D floor area variance for Princeton residents home to allow them to reconfigure and rebuild and essentially downsize considerably at a large reduction of impervious coverage to their lot and enclose so they could use for health reasons a smaller pool year round. You'll hear about some of the health reasons for this, some of the unique features of this property, both being next to kind of a noisy and busy elementary school, as well as the extreme screening and kind of almost hidden nature of the of the site. You'll also hear tonight, we have our architect Ron Berlin, who designed the the enclosure, as well as our planner, Jim Kyle, who I think you'll hear a few times tonight with other applications, but because this is a floor area variance, we want to we want to be sure we've crossed all our i's and cross all our t's and dotted our i's here for you. And as Mr. Bridger said, there is one bulk variance for neighborhood character, but I think as you'll you'll hear about the design, it was it was actually quite intentionally only partially articulated. Floor area is is one thing, but this enclosure was specifically designed so that while it could have been physically bigger from a height perspective or extend up to the full height at a larger area, it was it was intentionally designed to minimize the 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 feel and size and to be much more airy and open structure with with less impact perhaps on the neighboring properties, if there were to be some. If we could, I'll have one exhibit to mark of slides, and we've got our planner, Jim Kyle, our two homeowners and our architect here. Perhaps, Ms. Casey, we could swear them all in now, and I can bring us.
Sure, if you would all raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Daniella and Ashwin, if if you could unmute yourselves and introduce yourselves to the board and and give us a little bit of the background of your of why we're here and the requests for for this project here tonight.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Bridger, Ms. Casey.
Yeah.
With my name, I should know better. So I'm Daniela Bonafetta Cabra, and with my husband Ashwin here, we own forty-four Prince William Court. We we relocated here from Connecticut in two thousand and three. At that time, our children, Maya and Sasha, were entering the sixth and the fourth grade respectively, and they actually attended the Princeton public schools throughout through their graduation. They are now adults living in Brooklyn and Washington, D. C. And I just want to say, we we chose Princeton because we really wanted to live in a university town. We wanted to be in a community that was diverse. We wanted to be in a community that was diverse, that had great public schools, uh, and excellent cultural opportunities and a world-class theater. And happily, we're, we think all the, all the t's were crossed. Princeton exceeded expectations. Um, I'm trained as a neuroscientist, but, uh, I did choose to stay home with the children as the need arose. And so right now, now I describe myself as a professional volunteer. I started, uh, I started small here in Princeton, uh, volunteering for the Riverside School BTO and skating clubs. Uh, moving on to, uh, being a community member on the institutional care news of animals committee at Princeton University, which I served up for six years. Um, I'm also a current member of the, um, Carter Theater Board, um, this is my seventh year. And, um, my greatest, greatest satisfaction, uh, by far comes from serving on the board of Princeton Community Housing since two thousand and eight. Um, I'm really passionate about sharing this wonderful town with people from all, um, socioeconomic types. And another particular desire to make sure that seniors can continue to, to live here even after they move to, uh, to fixed incomes and sometimes, uh, would get priced out if it were not for the affordable housing opportunities. Um, similarly with young families, um, it's important to me that they can live in a in a rich community that's rich with cultural and economic opportunities, excellent schools, and live in safe, well-maintained rental homes that they can afford. So back to us, um, Ashwin and I moved, uh, to forty-four Prince William Court, uh, over eighteen years ago. And, um, we plan on retiring, on retiring, uh, retiring here. Um, sadly, I have a condition that is progressive, it's not treatable, but it's also not life-threatening, so that's all good. Um, unfortunately, it really severely limits my mobility and, uh, therefore my ability to maintain good physical health, uh, through exercise. Uh, in addition, as a result of this disability, um, I've had to drastically reduce the number of steps that I walk, that I can walk every day, as well as I should also not climb stairs. So, um, to address these, uh, these limitations, we have already a few years ago installed an elevator in our house, in our home, uh, that allows me to reach the bedrooms and the study upstairs. Um, and we're now, um, entertaining, you know, we're now gonna raise the level of our, um, family room, which at the moment is sunken from the rest of the, uh, first floor, uh, rooms. Um, my lifesaver is swimming. Um, when I'm in a pool, I can exercise safely and I can move free of pain. Uh, so lucky we have a pool. Uh, but unfortunately, the in-ground pool that, uh, exists on our property and was built, uh, back in the eighties, uh, can only really be used about four months a year, and that again, if it doesn't rain. Um, so, so we seek this accommodation tonight, um, so that I can, you know, even with a much smaller pool, but have it indoors. And, uh, I, I think that will allow me to swim every day to maintain good health and, um, age safely in place. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good Danielle.
Can you hear me? Okay, um, good evening, um, I'm Ashwin Chabra, uh, and co-owner with my wife Daniella, um, of forty-four Prince William Court. Um, since Daniella has already provided you with a short history on the motivation of our family's move to Princeton back in two thousand and three, as well as the reason for our current request, I will just limit my remarks to providing the board with some additional background on myself. Um, I grew up in New Delhi, India, and came to the US for graduate work and was trained as a theoretical physicist. Um, I've had an extensive career in finance and was the chief investment officer for the endowment at the Institute for Advanced Study in Princeton from two thousand and seven to two thousand and thirteen. Um, currently, I'm the president and chief investment officer for Euclidean Capital that manages the endowment for the Simons Foundation, one of the largest funders in basic science and math research in the country. I also currently serve on, um, several investment committees on several educational and research institutions, such as the Institute for Advanced Study, Rockefeller University, Stony Brook University, uh, Stony Brook Foundation, and the National Academy for Sciences. And I'm a proud author for a book entitled, The Aspirational Investor. Daniella and I met many decades ago in, at graduate school, and thus university towns are a home for us, uh, where we delight in their diversity, uh, and the intellectual excitement that comes with them. Uh, I hope that the committee will grant us permission for the addition slash modification to our current home so that we can continue to thrive in this community, uh, this very special community in the decades to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ashwin and Daniella, before we switch over to our architect, just wanna ask, uh, I, I know you and we have jurisdiction tonight, so we've sent notices out, but in addition to that, you've met with all of your surrounding neighbors and, and, and spoken with about this project, and, uh, has anyone raised any concerns with you?
Uh, no, um, we are, we're very lucky, we have a very friendly, uh, street with, with lovely neighbors. Um, most of them frankly, were just really excited to find out that we're not gonna move to Florida. So no, and we actually, I, you know, received a few emails and texts sort of wishing us.
Well, we get the rules for us to read those, but thank you for just letting us know that, uh, that you, you, you made the effort to, to talk to everybody. Um, so with that, I'd, I'd like to, um, invite Ron Berlin to, uh, uh, unmute himself and introduce himself. I know he's testified before this board before, but just to give us the benefit of his, uh, background and so I can offer him as an expert in architecture.
Greetings, board. Uh, my background is, I have a bachelor's degree, natural arts degree, uh, uh, in, uh, from Yale University with a double major in art and architecture. It seems that I'm still double majoring in those subjects and, uh, uh, an architect, a master of architecture degree uh, in, from Princeton University, which is what brought me here in nineteen seventy-seven, so I've been here a long time.
We would accept you as an expert witness, you've testified before us many times.
Thank you.
Um, and, and with everyone's permission, I'm going to, uh, cross my fingers and attempt to, uh, share my screen uh, with our slide presentation, um, and, um, ask that we mark this, uh, all cumulatively as A one, uh, it'll be our only exhibit here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, um, a series of number slides and, uh, Ron, um, uh, I'll, I'll start taking you through this so we can orient the board to where, uh, in the former township, uh, this property is. So, uh, here's slide two, if you could, kind of gives a quick description of where we are in, in, in Princeton.
Well, we're, we're in the eastern part of town on, uh, cul-de-sac. The backyard of which, uh, borders on the property of the Riverside Elementary School. So the, 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 the street is a very quiet street. And, uh, and the school property is the neighbor in addition to the other more conventional residential neighbors.
Here, uh, slide three is just a, a little bit more zoomed in, uh, that the lot is, uh, outlined in blue. Now, moving to the next slide, Ron, I wanna, anything else wanna speak to the property here? And what we're, what we're looking at, I think we flipped orientations between slides.
Right, we're now, um, we've got a, a sort of an, an aerial view from more of an e- uh, easterly, northeastern perspective. So you can see the, the location of this property and its adjacency to the, the Riverside School property. Um, there's quite a large house, as you can see, to the north. And you'll see shortly the buffering between these two properties. We're proposing to demolish an existing sunroom, a one-story sunroom, and to remove the existing amoeba-shaped uh, swimming pool and its, um, and its concrete decks, as you can see here.
I think we'll, we'll get a view of this, uh, better in an upcoming slide, but
Right.
we spent a lot of time at this, at this property, uh, maybe just talk a little bit about the existing screening, uh, that's, that's there, cause it's, it's, uh,
Uh, yeah, it's. All right, well, you'll see, there's one other thing, you can see there's an X in the upper right corner, that's an existing shed that we're also going to remove. And the screening, you know, Ryan, it's, I think it's premature to talk about this screen, but I will. It's, uh, it's what I would call the platonic ideal of dense landscape screening. It's really remarkable, um, and it's, it, 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 there you go. It's, uh, a, a very dense evergreen line of, I, I'm pretty sure they're arborvitae. Um, and the owners created this screen uh, a number of years ago, so it's been there quite a while, but it's just remarkably effective. Like this is the slide you wanna show when you have a disobedient potential applicant who doesn't understand the concept of creating a sense of privacy with, with the neighbor. It's, it's kind of a wonder, frankly. And here you can see also the proposed, um, elimination of the existing sunroom. And in the right-hand slide, the pool and its deck. There's the plan and, um, the lines of buffering trees on both sides. So both neighbors are afforded a really high degree of privacy. It's, it's a great feeling back there, it's really a lovely yard and garden. And, and the owners prize at that too, and, and have their own private motivation for maintaining as much of that open space and garden as possible. The, the, the addition, the, the placement of the addition is, if I could use a technical term, smack dab in the middle of the property. It's kind of like as far away from anybody as we could make it. Um, and it, it turns out to be actually the most propitious place, um, for, for the addition, like from an internal circulation point of view as well. So it's kind of serendipitous, but it's really kind of also very, very nice. Um, that it's, it's not, it's not, uh, thrusting itself, uh, uh, near or onto a, a neighbor. I'm, I'm glad that worked out well. In this, you can see that a kind of the basic it layout, it's, it's a very, very simple. And I guess that, you know, what's the next slide, Ryan? Is it the plan? Or no? Uh, but you can go back, please, that's okay. Yeah, just to, that's it. Just to discuss, when you see a more detailed view of the plan, um, I, I can elaborate on some of this stuff, but really, really try to reduce this to the minimum that I could. And the, the, the swimming lane is eight feet wide. Uh, a traditional lap pool has a ten-foot wide lane, a competition lane is eight point two feet. So this is just about as narrow as I could squeeze it. The length of the lane is forty-eight feet, a standard pool length, the so-called short course, is twenty-five yards or seventy-five feet. So, you know, I, any shorter than this, and you just wouldn't be able to do enough strokes to make it worthwhile. Another measure that I took here is I reduced the deckage, if that's a word, kind of a horrible one, but the, the deck only runs alongside one long side of the pool. And it's only five feet wide, any narrower than that I felt would be unsafe. So I tried to minimize the deck as well. And the result is that the addition is only fourteen and a half feet wide, which is the width of an average one-car garage. Um, and is less than two-fifths of the width of the house. It's pretty much squoze as far as I could squeeze it. Um, there are two exacresences, maybe I should find a more flattering term for them. There's a, there's, uh, an, an outpocketing of, of the pool itself with a bench, which is the nature observatory. Because Daniella loves to look at the life around her. And opposite it is a little s- social area. And, uh, I think that because you, in the nature observatory, you'd be on a bench anyway, that frankly, even from a programmatic point of view, wouldn't wanna be a tall volume. The social area though, really could have been, and we didn't make it so, we reduced it. In, in so doing, of course, we're requesting a variance, but I think you'll appreciate that dare I say, it makes more sense to do it this way, and it was certainly a sacrifice we're very willing to make. Maybe next slide, there you go. So those existing landscape, the dense landscape, evergreen buffers, we are absolutely going to allow to remain. You can see here, the, there's a better, an even better juxtaposition shot of size of pool plus deck existing versus size of pool plus deck proposed. There you go, thanks. But the proposed pool with its deck is only, uh, well, the proposed pool is only fifty-one percent of the existing pool. I, I think it's gonna be more than fine for Daniella swimming, by the way, Ashwin swims too. But, um, this graphically shows, is it, it's a display of our, of our, um, good faith efforts in this regard.
Ron, going back, so this slide here, um, oh, that, that blue kind of outline is, shows the current footprint of the existing pool and decking kind of overlaid on top of the proposal, is that what you see here?
Exactly so, yes.
So, uh, a- and Derek, um, gave his information to, to start with, but, um, by doing this and by shrinking this so much, or we're actually not only reducing the amount of impervious coverage by about three percent, but removing a, a, a variance condition, right now there's more than is permitted and we're reducing it several hundred feet, uh, below what's permitted, is that the plan?
That's, that's, that is so.
Uh, we also have some blue arrows here, you wanna tell, um, uh, uh, maybe the board what, what, what lives in those areas, uh, as far as there's some existing, I think, stormwater.
Yeah, there, the owners took, took measures, uh, a number of years ago to, um, to improve the onsite stormwater management. Um, and so there are, uh, there are area drains leading to a dry well, I believe, um, that we will also make use of. So the storm water, uh, that's drained from the roofs and decks of this new structure will also be conducted into this system. It's just really nice, the owners took it upon themselves to do this without prodding earlier on. And that, that system exists now. Here's a better plan of the plan. And you can see, it's gonna be quite wonderful, there'll be a pair of French doors from the family room. You've got your little, that's it, uh, uh, on axis with the new structure. Um, it will not, right now, that family room, that's the room that has the step down, in fact, you can see the line that, of, of that. Uh, and that's gonna be filled in, as it were, so that living in the house is, it occurs at one level on the first floor, and the new pool deck itself will also be on that same level. How do you get down to the, to the landscape level? You'll see that there's a, a, there's, uh, off of the social area, there's a terrace. And you'll see in a later slide that there's a, a kind of a turf slope that will make it easy for, again, no steps for Daniella. Um, and it, it, it turns out to be a really pleasant amenity as well. The exterior decks, um, that lead from the living room to this exterior terrace, those are, um, uh, decks that are permeable, they'll, they'll be open be- between successive boards, so they'll drain to, to the earth. There's a couple, there are a couple of other features that are worth mentioning now. There's a couple. There are a couple of other features that are worth mentioning now because they're easy to understand looking at the plan. One of the other ways of like just trying as hard as possible to reduce the bulk of this is to take all the mechanical equipment, which is significant, and to bring it indoors, first of all, because it can be a bit noisy and and also to put it in a basement mechanical room. And the access to that is through exterior doors, Bilco doors um that lead into this L shaped mechanical room immediately adjacent to the changing room slash bathroom. Uh, and it has a green roof on it as well. Never done one of those before, so I'm excited about the prospect of of working that out. Um, so the idea is just to 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 reduce the impact of this building as much as possible, and the owners really got behind this idea. And frankly, from a mechanical point of view, it it's it's going to be very efficient. It's kind of exciting. It's going to I've already started working with the mechanical engineer and on uh kind of basic planning of the mechanical system. There are a number of what you might call environmental features of this building. The owners are very interested in pursuing that. There will be a solar energy component. At least this is what's planned. The orientation is excellent because the one of the long uh facets of the hipped roof of the new addition faces pretty much south, and it's a pretty clear area. It will either be a photo photovoltaic array, or we're also considering possibly um preheating the pool water. I think it's probably a little more likely that it'll be a photovoltaic array. It doesn't show in the renderings later, so I wanted to mention that now. The windows that we're planning to use here have uh there are special windows that have a very high R value. I it looks like it's going to be R nine on the on the windows, which is unusual. I've mentioned the green roof over the basement mechanical space and the permeable deck pads. We're also planning um an HVAC heat recovery system for preheating the pool water. So the the heat that's generated even when the space is air conditioned um will be used to boost, pre-boost, as it were, the pool water to keep it at temperature. And by the way, Daniela doesn't require it. She prefers a relatively low temperature for the pool water, which is a happy a a happy preference. In addition, the in addition, the addition is conceived as an independently conditioned space. This is very important to the owners. Because because when they're not present here, they can basically turn the systems down to a minimum. They're not maintaining this great big space that's connected to the volumes of their existing house, but very intentionally want this thing to be independent of the house, hence the French doors, the separation from the house. Anything that you'd like to add, Ryan?
No, I think I I think that that captures this part of the design. Um, we let's get back over again, just reminding that this is a significantly smaller in terms of usable pool area and deck area than the current pool. Consciously to try to make this uh structure as small as possible to to accommodate uh, you know, a small amount of lap swimming and and really nothing else. Here to slide 11 here where this is the existing house and and in red, Ron, that shows that sunroom that's going to be removed.
Yeah, and that sunroom is that's the piece that's going to be uh removed. Just for reference, the sun that sunroom is 21 and a half feet wide, whereas the new pool structure, the natatorium, if I may, is going to be 14 and and a half feet wide. So quite a reduction.
Rear elevation, I guess, and that photo kind of shown side by side.
Yep, uh there you there you see the 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 difference in width of the main structure of the natatorium and the and the existing sunroom. And here you can see also, this is really important for the case because you can see this this hierarchy of forms that I I wanted to that I wanted to create in this design where the main house is the big piece and the sort of this long volume of the pool structure is the kind of medium piece. Um, and these two sort of saddlebags are the smaller pieces that articulate with with that with that. And so thi- this kind of puts puts this in perspective in terms of the us uh a a a size or scale comparison with the existing residents. But it also, I think, begins to make a very compelling argument that extending those side pieces of which there are three. There's the bathroom slash changing room in the distance. There's this sort of half round observ- nature observatory closer to us on the left side. And on the right side, what I'm calling the social space that faces south to the terrace and the sloped turf transition to grade. You'll see this perhaps better, you know, when you see this um three dimensionally, but I I really wanted to show you this this hierarchy of forms.
And and Ron, just from from a design perspective, you could have built this this structure as one large box, and it would have been the same amount of floor area, but consciously you cut this down essentially to just the the minimum that was needed to make it usable and only had the larger portions for where minimally was required.
Yes, that's that's right. Oh, and this brings one other thing to mind. Thanks. This is okay. You can go to that slide. It's fine. Another, I forgot to mention this other environmental element. It's really important that you'll see also in the three dimensional slides, which is that the west facing and the long south facing facades have a a a cantilever trellis that sh- will shade the interior. It will provide shade in in the summertime and will allow the sun to penetrate in the wintertime. I'm really excited about that. And and we hope that that we can actually encourage deciduous vines to to grow on this as well. So I'm sorry I omitted that before. You can see it here, but to see it much more clearly in the other slide. These are best. These are the two, you know, the two sort of long views. And you can see that there is a lot of glass and the idea is really to uh maximize the transparency of the building. We're not only doing that for you, but of course for the owners too, who really want to feel as much as possible that they're kind of still out of doors. One of the other design intents that you'll see also illustrating the three dimensional view is having a clear story. The windows at the higher level wrap around completely and uninterruptedly following their rhythm around the building. And so that's another, in my opinion, benefit from keeping the 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 tertiary additions in this hierarchy at that lower level. And here you get a much better sense of that. Here too, you can see that the turf ramp, as it were, that leads you down to grade level, which I think is going to be really lovely because it it's like a a Chazlong that's like built into the landscape, as it were, because it faces south, so it's a nice place for sunning at at an angle. But there'd also be, of course, steps down, but you can, I hope, get a sense of the the transparency of of this building. And in the background, you can see the wall of evergreens um that buffers the structure from the neighbor. This is a view from the other side. It's kind of in a way the most utilitarian view, but it's the, you know, it's the right thing to show it to you. You can see these other two tertiary structures. The bathroom slash changing room with the Bilco doors and leading to the underground mechanical room with the green roof on top. And then the what we're calling the nature observatory. That's part of the pool itself.
This this view here, but I'm highlighting the nature observatory. This is the articulation, but that because it does not go to the uh hot full height of the roof doesn't count for neighborhood character purposes. Is that
correct? And I guess so does the bathroom's changing room addition, right?
Right. And 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 consciously, again, and I've said this a few times, but you consciously decided to not bring it to the roof line to try to to decrease the mass and and bulk uh uh feeling perhaps of of the structure.
Absolutely. Can you go back to the to the the previous slide for a moment? So that that the board can also imagine this structure of the of the social area um being extended to the full height, and it becomes like just imposing and castle like. And I think keeping that airy, clear story wrapping uninterruptedly around the building really helps to kind of keep it light. And these are ju- these just read as sort of plugins to 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 the main structure, which again is only 14 and a half feet wide. So make, yeah, you can see here too how we're really trying to um reserve as much of the garden and open space uh as as we can. Like, there are lots of good reasons for that, to satisfy you, the board, and also very much to satisfy the owners who love their garden.
And then I guess, Ron, one more time, I think we've talked about this neighborhood character variance uh quite a bit, but here we're we're showing the the bump outs that are there, but the, you know, the difference between the bump out that goes up three quarters of the way to the roof line versus one that would go up all the way, and those were there.
E- exactly.
Mostly articulated articulations are are hiding. So for um.
What's the next slide, Ryan?
Oh, well, then we're getting we're next. We'll we'll get into uh to to Jim's testimony. If there's anything else you'd like to say to.
Yeah, there's this. There's one other thing about this is that I it it it's sort of worked out serendipitously. I think that partly because of measures that the owners took on their own in in terms of landscaping. And the kind of uh happy accidents of design where this thing kind of plugs into the existing house in the best possible place. And the adjacency to the school. Basically, no one can see this thing. And it's 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 just and nobody can see this this structure um in its location, and it's just a kind of a a wonderful confluence of factors that that brought us to that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ron. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, if with our last witness would be our our planner uh to quickly just go through the variance conditions.
Excuse me one moment, uh, Ryan. Can I ask a question, Mr. Berlin?
Of course.
Ron, is there any exterior equipment, any mechanical equipment that's going to be outside on grade?
Only the um condensers for the air conditioning system.
And where will those be?
Probably, it's a good question, Steve. I should have shown them, but they'll probably be kind of tucked into the armpit, as it were, between the pool structure and the mechanical room.
Okay, all right.
And that's that's well, well away from the three foot uh.
Yeah.
Right, no, right, no concerns there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else has any other questions for for Mr. Berlin? Our next witness would be uh our planner, uh Jim Kyle.
You're number one.
Jim, if you want, I know you've uh it's it's a a monthly affair for for you to be before this court, but quickly uh um might save some other people uh some time this evening uh to get your quickly your your expertise.
I think we we would have said he was here last week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay. So I was retained by the applicant to review the variance issues associated with this proposal. Met with the council and we discussed the application. I've reviewed all the plans and materials that were submitted, also reviewed the ordinance and master plan, and also visited the site as well. Uh, reviewed Mr. Bridger's memo as well. So um I think I'll dispense with a lot of the opening information that's already been provided in terms of zoning and location. Um, and just summarize the variances that we're seeking this evening. The first is D four floor ratio variance. Uh, as Mr. Bridger had noted, 20% is permitted in this zone. We are proposing 22.3. And then a bulk variance from the neighborhood standards, uh that's 10B dash 255 to C2. And that limits the length of any wall to 40 feet without articulation. As we've described, it's a little bit of a technicality in that we have the articulation. It just does not extend to the full height of the roof. Therefore, variance is necessary. So in terms of the um F R variances, the board has heard a number of times for me. Uh, we're looking at the case Coventry Square v Westwood, and this was outlined by the court in a case uh called Randolph Town Center. Basically, what the court said there is that for a floor ratio variance, we're going to use a legal standard similar to that of the Coventry case, which is a little bit less of a legal standard. And we're really focusing on the continued appropriateness of the site uh despite the increase in floor, rather, can the site accommodate the problems associated with the increase in floor area? And then on the negative criteria, focusing on the impact of that increase on adjacent properties, and then can we reconcile it with the governing body's intent behind imposing that 20% limit in the first place? So in terms of the positive criteria, uh, I think there are purposes of zoning that are promoted here by the grant of the variance. The first is purpose A to encourage the health, safety morals and general welfare, and also purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment. So I think the public welfare benefit here is twofold. Uh, first, as as we've described Daniela's condition, this allows her uh the ability to swim and exercise year round. Uh, of course, you know, normally in in non pandemic times, you might be able to do this at a health club or, you know, some other type of facility, but that's kind of risky behavior these days. So this is a a more preferable uh approach. It will allow her to you know, utilize this year round and address her health condition and continue exercise. I think the other public benefit here is that, as we've talked about, all the pool equipment will be enclosed within the basement. So any of that noisy pool equipment that's normally associated with these types of facilities will be indoors. Uh, it's going to reduce noise, and it also has a visual benefit in that we're not going to see pool equipment, you know, from neighboring properties. It also is going to limit noise uh as well. So obviously, with swimming occurring indoors, it it's going to limit a lot of that potential nuisance to any of the neighbors. In terms of the negative criteria, uh the 2.3% increase that we're requesting amounts to about 544 additional square feet on this property. About half of that is attributed to the pool enclosure itself. Uh, we've removed other elements that contribute to flurry on the site and then attempt to limit this. You heard Ron talk about the fact that we're removing the sunroom, uh, the shed. And we've also squeezed this down to, you know, what we feel is the the least reasonable uh amount that we can in order to limit that that flurry request that we're here for. So the other thing here is that the increase in flurry that we're seeking doesn't come at the expense of other bulk requirements. So as we've talked about, we're reducing impervious coverage on the site by about 2.7%. And we also meet rather comfortably all the required setbacks here. So this is, as we've seen in the architectural uh drawings and the 3D model, this is essentially a one story structure. Uh, it's well hidden from the street and adjacent properties. Uh, having been out there, I can say the the green giant arborvitae that line the perimeter of this property are substantial. Uh, it forms a very dense screen and and screens from the adjacent properties very well, including uh good separation from the school to the rear. So you know, there there's less activity. There's playing fields on the school property directly behind this. There are no structures on the school property uh at that location, and there is significant tree vegetation on the the school property as well as at the perimeter of this property. So it does a really good job of hiding this uh pool addition and enclosure, and it really limits any potential visual impact uh to the neighboring property. So I think overall, given the lack of visibility and really the the nature of the structure being a one story structure, I think the additional flurry here will not have a substantial impact on adjacent properties. As far as the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the ordinance, uh, the obvious intent here is to control the mass and coverage of the lot. But it also is intended to regulate the appearance of structures in relation to available land. So I think um on this, this doesn't result in a significant increase over what's permitted. Again, it's it's 544 square feet additional all all really associated with the pool enclosure. I think the additional flurry that we have here will largely be screened from both the road and adjacent properties. It it's really going to ensure that the site doesn't have an. I think the additional flurry that we have here will largely be screened from both the road and adjacent properties. It's really going to ensure that the site doesn't have an overdeveloped appearance. And I think overall, the slight increase should not substantially impair the intent of flurry controls, particularly given the nature of the structure and the fact that we're not creating habitable space. We're not adding bedrooms and additional living space. This is really a, you know, an outdoor area that's enclosed. So I don't think there'll be any substantial impairment to the intent of the ordinance or the standard, and we can reconcile it with the governing body's intent behind that twenty percent limit. As far as the bulk variants for the neighborhood character issue, I think this does qualify under the C two analysis where there are purposes of zoning that are promoted and the benefits outweigh the detriments. So providing that less than full height articulation, as Ron indicated, helps to reduce, excuse me, the mass of this structure a little further. And it brings the scale of the building down. So, you know, those areas appear a little less massive. And it kind of brings the scale of the structure down overall. And I think given its isolated location and the fact that we do provide articulation, just not all the way, I'm sorry. Go back, sorry, skip that. So overall, this provides a better appearance for the structure, which would relate to purpose I, the municipal land, you saw a more desirable visual environment. So in terms of the negative, I don't think the departure here from this standard will have a dramatic effect on adjacent properties. Rather, we think it's a benefit. Again, there's significant perimeter screening and it really reduces the mass of the structure. And it's not visible from the road. So there's no issue in terms of, you know, the outward appearance of the property as viewed from the street. So I think given its isolated location, we are providing the articulation as we talked about, it just doesn't go all the way to the roof. I think means that there's no chance there's substantial impact from this departure on adjacent properties. As far as the intent of the standard, you know, the general intent of the neighborhood standards was to better address residential and neighborhood character. I think for this particular standard, the intent was to avoid long straight sections of wall that would have little visual interest. And we believe that the intent of the standard with our design is met despite the fact that we don't have that articulation going all the way up to the roof. The plane of the wall is broken and that articulation covers about three quarters of the total height of the facade. I think the intent's further met, given the significant windows that are proposed, that further breaks up that sidewall and avoids kind of a long boring stretch, but I think was the intent here. And it also allows for a highlight of the clear story windows just under the roof line and provide symmetry for the structure. So Ron talked about the fact that, you know, extending that up would would kind of interrupt that symmetry that we have, you know, all along the the top of the structure. So I think overall here, there shouldn't be any substantial detriment or impairment to those standards, given that we do provide the articulation. It's just a little nuance of the fact that it doesn't reach all the way to the roof. Chairman, that's all I had in the way of direct. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I don't have any questions. Do any board members have any questions of Mr. Kyle? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, before we open this up to the public, do you want to say anything?
No, just to thank everyone, we and just perhaps to reserve if any, if there are any members from the public with comments, just to address them if there are.
Okay, okay. At this time, we'll open it up to comments from the public. Claudia Eve, do we have anybody who has raised their hands, indicated they'd like to speak?
No, not yet.
Yeah, okay. We'll give it a couple of seconds here. Okay, all right. Well, look, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing now. And before we go into executive session, once again, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to say something?
Again, I want to thank the members of the board. This, the applicant is very both excited to, from the environmental perspective, to reduce the coverage on this property so significantly to provide for both the energy efficient features and to hide the sound generating features underground. This structure will both buffer the sound for them from the adjacent school and to their neighbors by kind of bottling up inside. And I think the testimony you heard from Ron Berlin about the design of this, that while you heard from our planner that the neighborhood could support this floor area generally with and not have any detriments, both from the screening and for the other reasons it put in here. But the design of this building structure was done in such a way as to minimize the feeling or bulk, if you could see it. And I think the testimony is pretty clear that this is quite hidden, if not completely hidden from any surrounding property. Again, thank you for considering it and allowing this extra step for the applicant to continue to retire in place at this property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're in executive session now. Do any of the board members have any comments on this?
I had a question, actually. The, about the impervious coverage, are the new downspouts, are those all going to the storm sewer? They are.
Yes.
No. Yes, no.
Attention basins.
The existing, there are existing dry wells on site, so it's essentially diverting water from the pool deck previously to those locations.
Okay, and just so I understand, the impervious coverage calculations normally an exterior pool area is part of impervious and exterior pool area, okay.
Yep. So this and after.
Steve, I'm sorry, did you open it to public comment?
I did.
You did? All right, thank you.
We had no public comment. Any other comments from the board?
I had a question about the, just the decking. So they're claiming the decks because they, the water will flow through them. They're claiming that all the area under the deck is is pervious. Is that how that's calculated?
So we calculated from the, from a coverage perspective, those numbers are included. They just also chose a material that would allow water to go through it. But that is included in the, even in the, we've reduced coverage by three percent figure, that does include that decking as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, comments, any other comments? Okay, well, I think this is a, personally, I think it's a very well-done addition. We have a significant reduction in impervious coverage. I think the uniqueness of the screening here from the neighbors really offsets visually any impact this may have, and I think that would be minimal. And I believe that the added benefit, it allows the the homeowners to stay here, to stay in the community, which would be very nice. So I support the application. So if there are no other comments from the board, if someone would like to make a motion. I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein, Stein, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes, thank you. It's, it was kind of an unceremonious end, very quick end to a lot of effort to get here, but, but well done. Enjoy it.
Thanks very much, board.
Thanks, everyone.
Very, very nice design, Ronald. I really, really, I meant to make a comment earlier. I think you did a really exceptional job coming up with a really, really nice design. It really looks good.
Thanks, Mr. Davidge.
I also, I also hope that the pandemic is well and truly over and done with before you're done with construction.
We all hope that, yeah.
I want to say too that I feel like this plan could be inspiring to people who have, you know, crumbling, rambling pools. It might be you know, you could start a trend. It seems, it seems really great in a lot of ways.
Actually, one other comment, I have one other comment. The, the sunroom, it looks like it's in very good condition with some nice windows. It'd be nice if you could find a way to maybe recycle some of that material. There are an awful lot of nice windows and French doors. You're probably going to use new design. It'd be great if you could lift the whole thing up and move it somewhere because someone could probably live in that thing. But I think if you could find a way to recycle the
Make an offer.
That would be nice if you could find a way to reuse some of those nice materials.
Thanks.
Thank you again.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a lot on the agenda yet this evening. Our next hearing will be case Z twenty-one dash one oh seven seventy-one Deer Path Block seventy-five oh seven Lot nine in the R five district. Do we have the applicant and their representatives up, Mr. Kennedy?
Me again. We have two people, Sigmund Lerner, our architect, and Alina Budin, our homeowner to bring up.
Karen, is everything in order?
He notices there in order, the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
You're muted, Derek.
You're muted, Derek.
Thank you, Jim. Alina and Dan Budin are the owners of seventy-one Deer Path. It's located in the R five zone of the former Princeton township. They're seeking a C one and C two variance. Permit to construction slash conversion of a front entry carport to a garage, an exception to the required setback from the nearest portion of the front facade. Subject lot is not complying with regard to the required twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square foot lot area. The existing is fifteen thousand square feet. And it's also non-complying with respect to the right side setback. Requirements fifteen, existing is fourteen feet, eleven feet and an eighth of an inch. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing carport storage area to garage. Section ten B two fifty-five two D one. Sub A subsection A is a part of the neighborhood character. Requires that front-facing garages be set back sixteen feet from the nearest portion of the front facade. The proposed garage will be set back two feet from the nearest section of the front facade. It's kind of dictated by the current position of the carport. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Cohen and Dirk. As Mr. Bridger said, this is a neighborhood, I know we've had applications in this neighborhood before, where the prevailing architecture in the area is front-facing garages or U-shaped garages or U-shaped carports. You'll hear in a moment from the property homeowner who's doing some renovations on her home. And it simply is here to enclose the existing carport at its existing location to provide the security and safety and usability benefits that come from an actual garage with doors as compared to a open carport where everyone can kind of see your business and clutter. You'll see a bunch of examples from the neighborhood, both of the front-facing or protruding carports, which are kind of a neighborhood character issue, as well as enclosed garages that are very common there now as well. And I'll just note that I think there was a late addition from HPC. This is a district that's, I believe, on the list for possible inclusion and they reviewed this and had no issues with the change in their advisory role. So with that, I could ask that Alina and Sigmund both be sworn in if we could?
Sure, if you would both raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alina, if you just could very quickly introduce yourself and I think you probably summarized pretty well why you're looking to enclose your open carport, but just express a little bit of your, your plans for the property and then we'll show the board what we're planning.
So myself, Alina and my husband Dan Budin, we are relocating from Newton, Massachusetts to Princeton. To be able to live near our daughter, son-in-law and the three grandchildren that have been living in Princeton for over ten years. During the last ten years, I've commuted a lot and since the pandemic, this is very challenging and we finally decided to move to Princeton to be close to our family. And hopefully to be able to age in place. We, we have a friend who lives down the street and she actually notified us about that property becoming available. And we liked it very much. It's a one-floor living. And we like the character of the neighborhood, but the property hasn't been updated in quite a while. So we embarked on a renovation project, which will keep the character of the property and it will really improve the the look of it. From, we wanted to enclose the front-facing carport and we thought that would be a pretty simple and obvious part of the renovation, as many other houses have exactly the same feature. It turned out not to be the case due to some recent regulations. The benefits of enclosing the garage, I think, are quite obvious, as Ryan mentioned, especially for us as older people. It's a safety and a health issue and also some security beyond the aesthetic aspect of not having everything out in the open. So here we are and we hope that you will agree with our point of view and we will be able to add the two garage doors, basically, which will convert the existing carport into a garage.
Thank you, Alina.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to bring on our project architect, introduce himself and then we'll go through a couple of slides about what the proposal is. Sigmund?
Hi, everybody. I'm a designer here on behalf of LDF Studio. Been working with Alina on this project and it is as described, basically an existing carport that we'd like to make a garage.
I'm going to share my screen here and Mr. Casey, again, we've got, I think, nine slides that we'd like to have marked as our one exhibit this evening.
Okay, and Mr. Lerner, quick question. You said you're a designer, a designer or an architect?
I'm a designer.
Designer, okay, thank you.
All right, and you're familiar with the project and the neighborhood and the designs that Alina has chosen for her home? Okay. So first, if we could just take the board through where we're at, just briefly describe where this neighborhood is in Princeton. Are we looking at it here? That's an arrow pointing to the, to the to the zoning map of where our project is on Deer Path?
Yes, it's by the Littlebrook School off of Rollingmead Road on a street called Deer Path.
Here's a blow up a little closer. I think you could see the elementary school on the top of the screen and this property kind of in the center.
Yes.
Going, you know, I think you did a nice job of collecting a bunch of data for the homeowner. But you talk a little bit about the neighborhood and the prevailing kinds of homes that are there.
Yeah, there seems to be a repetition of the the home type in this immediate neighborhood. And many of them have these carports that stick out either flush with or slightly recessed or even in some cases in front of the front facade of the homes. And a few have been converted to garages, possibly before the neighborhood character ordinance. And it seems to be a very common pattern in this neighborhood that the garages are sticking out or the carports in many cases.
So here, this slide shows an overhead view of the existing house and the carport that will be enclosed with doors. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then the house next door, you see a front protruding carport. I ask you, is, is the homeowner hasn't designed the home to, or let me ask you this. hasn't designed the home to, or let me ask you this, was, would there be a, what would you have to do to this house to, in order to, um, recess this carport or garage back sixteen feet or put it behind?
Okay, so you can see in the, in the kind of, uh, top right-hand corner of the, of the house, um, as you see it in this picture, there's a, a, a kind of clear story, uh, window, uh, facade. That is a, uh, an enlarged kind of sunroom with an enlarged roof. Um, and we basically, we would like to leave that where it is, um, um, and basically as it is, um, while, while renovating it. Uh, but not have to move the footprint of that. If we wanted to, uh, set the garage back fifteen feet, we would have to, uh, demolish that whole portion of the house, um, and then probably rebuild it, um, uh, uh, behind where the garage would end up, uh, so that the, the homeowner doesn't lose that square footage that she needs.
And, and would an excessive amount of, uh, driveway would need to go and wrap around to get back to that new location?
Um, well, it, this, I mean, I, I was describing a, still a front-facing garage, but just set back fifteen feet. I don't think you have the space on this property to, um, have a side-facing garage.
No, that, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Here again, these are the kind of, the left is the current condition and the right is the proposed, uh, um, plan, showing that space essentially enclosed with garage doors?
Yes, so we, uh, you can see all the way on the left of the building is the, is the, uh, farthest, uh, face of the, of the house, uh, closest to the street. So, um, to the right of this kind of entry, uh, patio area, we've added a mudroom that would come out to be flush with that existing facade on the left side. Um, and then, uh, leaving, um, what would be future garage doors, um, essentially, uh, on the same footprint that the carport, uh, the existing carport entrance, um, is at. So it would be set back about one foot nine from the frontmost face of the building, uh, if we leave it as is.
Um, you, uh, I'll did some homework here to find all of these examples in the neighborhood of front-facing or U-shaped garages, uh, that's what this slide shows here, uh, those neighborhood examples, though, I, I suppose in the, the bottom left, that's a newer construction, perhaps the type that, uh, the neighborhood character ordinance was interested in, um, rather than the other examples are uh, architecture types like seventy-one Deer Path, but that have been enclosed. And then again, um, these slides here, um, they show, uh, neighboring properties, uh, uh, on, on both sides essentially, and across-streeted Deer Path with that front extending parking feature, um, that, uh, would essentially be kept or, or preserved, but, but again, examples of, of, of areas where that sixteen-foot setback does occur in this property or in, in this neighborhood. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I know you have a, 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 a long evening of applications. Try to keep this as simple as possible. Again, the, the idea is to, to, uh, match and, and preserve what's mostly the feature, the predominant or common feature in the neighborhood to have these front, either flush or U-shaped front-facing garages and carports. Uh, it is a existing condition of this type, and specifically this house itself, um, and the applicant, uh, for the variance is looking to enclose it, um, uh, so that, that she could enjoy the, the safety and convenience features of a enclosed garage.
I do have a question. Can you go back to the slide that the floor plans are on? So in the, uh, the current condition, um, are you, when you look at the two, the current and proposed, the entire facade on the proposed appears to be flush, and the, the current condition shows a little bigger projection on the left-hand side. So are you going to have any articulation in that front facade, or is it just going to be a continuous wall?
So, yeah, it's, it's a little confusing, but it's not, um, what we're proposing is not a, a flush wall all the way across. Um, essentially, um, that, that, uh, leftmost part of the drawing, um, is your outermost part of the wall, and then it steps back uh, to a front entry door that will be underneath a, a, a roof overhang. Um, uh, and then it steps back again to the kitchen wall with the sink and windows.
You're not, you're not infilling that area. You're just putting a roof over it?
Yes, exactly. And there currently is a roof over it, so on the existing drawing, there's a roof that comes out all the way to where that patio, that brick, the brick walkway, um, leading up to the entry door, there's a roof overhang, um, that's over that area currently. So that, that's why the, where we say that the car, that's where the carport currently starts, and that's what we're leaving as the beginning of the garage.
Yeah, yeah, no, I recognize that you can't do a side-facing garage in this case with a very limited existing side yard setback, and, uh, and I do agree that the sixteen-foot moving this whole, uh, the garage back sixteen feet would create, uh, complications within the house. Um, I just questioned the, uh, you know, again, how that front facade is going to look, but, um, I, you don't have any elevations of it, do you?
Um, I guess not in this presentation, um, we do, but essentially it's, uh, this. Well, it's about, I would say, uh, it's about a seventeen or eighteen-foot stretch of facade, and then it steps back to that whole entry patio area. It steps back, uh, about five, six feet.
And it's all, it's all basically under the roof?
And it's all under the roof, but it's, it's recessed, um, uh, behind the roof line, and then it comes back out again at the mudroom, um, for about, uh, you know, it's another, it's like a six or seven-foot, uh, wide volume that's, it, that is then flush with that other side, and then it steps back again, uh, one foot nine for the garage face.
So it has some articulation?
There's articulation throughout, yes.
Okay.
We, we do have an elevation. It's sheet A two.
We, we do, a clip from the presentation. If you'd like, I could share it to my screen, uh.
Just for a second, if you would.
Yes. Said and done, apparently, but hold on, let me, uh, this, this is A two, um, well, sheet A two of, of, of the plans that were submitted with our packet and along the township.
Yeah, I just didn't, I missed that one, so. Okay, I mean, I, I see what it is now. Thank you. Okay. Any other board members have any questions? Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy, I'm going to open it up to the public in a moment, so.
Thank you. No, I, I, I have nothing further.
Okay, all right, um, we'll open the hearing up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they would like to speak?
No, there's no, no hands raised.
Okay, all right, um, hearing, no one from the public. I'll close the public portion of the hearing. Again, Mr. Kennedy, before we go into executive session.
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll try to be, keep it this as quick as possible. I, I think, uh, this is a fairly simple application and uh, the hardship involved with, uh, demolishing that part of the house and moving it back just, just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you. Okay, um, board members, any questions, comments, motions?
I, I have a question, Steve.
Yes.
And maybe for Mr. Kennedy, have you had any contact with HPC? Any comment on maybe type of doors you would put in for the garage?
We, uh, so they, they did do a courtesy review of the application there. They did a memo on it. I'll be honest, I don't think they asked about that, um, um.
Noted, okay.
Provide them the, the detail about it. I guess it's in our, our packet. I don't know if they, they had any thoughts on that.
Yeah, it's just an idea, since they're considering making it an historic district or, or recommending. It might be something that, uh,
Well, certainly, uh.
It might give you some ideas.
I, I think, uh, reaching out to Elizabeth is a, a good idea and that, that thing, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting neighborhood.
It is, it is. Good comment, Michael.
I'd like to just, uh, support this idea, particularly the fact that they include, it, it's almost enclosed already, so all they're really looking for is to put two doors on it. It's not like they're building a structure or so I support the idea.
Yeah, I, I, I second your comment. I think it's a, it is a good idea. And I do agree with Michael that maybe, uh, a, a little discussion with Elizabeth, uh, would be a good idea, very good idea, actually.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I am on the, uh, meeting. If, uh, if you want to ask me any questions regarding the.
There you are.
Um, I did review the, um, the doors with the H.
Miss Kim, I'll just swear you in quickly because you may testify later again tonight. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, as I was saying, that the HPC chair and myself had discussed the, the doors, whether we thought it's appropriate, not actually the style, but whether it be two or one. And, um, the, uh, the agreement was that two was acceptable, the way that it's designed, but we didn't really get into the material or the style, but we'd be happy to, uh, um, you know, work with the applicant if that's what the board would like.
That would be a good idea.
Oh. You know, I'm, I'm not insisting, and I think it's outside our purview. It's not an historic district, so. If, if, if the owner.
Resource, so, I mean, I, I'll, I'll just say, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out and see what we, what input we can get. I prefer that not be any kind of condition, but, uh, we'll, we'll certainly, uh, uh, Elizabeth and, and, and the group is always a wonderful resource, so, um, thank you.
Yeah.
Input, anything she could help us with?
Sure, and, and just for the, the board to, um, understand that, um, there was a, with the former township, there was a, uh, movement to have this area designated as a mid-century district. However, because of the divide of the neighborhood and actually the, the report and everything was done, although because of the divide of the neighborhood, it never went forward, and that's why it ended up at this point being a recommended district.
Cool.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, um, any other comments from the board, or if, and if someone would like to make a motion?
A move we approve.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, Claudia, please.
Okay, one second. Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Is this time?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey.
Okay, um, okay, our next hearing is, um, forty-eight Levitt Lane. I hope I'm pronouncing that properly. It is case number Z twenty-one dash one oh five, as I said, forty-eight Levitt Lane, block thirty-two point oh six, lot one twenty-five point oh two in the R two district. Karen, is everything in order?
It is. The, uh, board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, thank you. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Zhang, Zhang and Tiananhuang are the owners of forty-eight Levitt Lane. It's located in the former borough in the R two zone. They're seeking a C two variance, uh, to permit the construction of a deck and a patio, an exception to the required rear yard setback. The subject lot is non-compliant with regard to the required lot area of ten thousand square feet, whereas the existing is eight thousand two hundred and seventy-six. It's also not complying with the one-hundred-foot lot requirement, the existing seventy-two point two-two. The lot was part of a, uh, minor subdivision in two thousand and eleven. The applicant is proposing to construct a rear deck and patio that's approximately three hundred and eighty square feet that will encroach into the rear thirty-five-foot yard setback. The following variances are required, uh, distance to the deck, which is approximately twelve by nineteen, will be twenty-eight and a half feet, and the distance to the seventeen and a half by nine and a half patio will be thirty-one feet, whereas the required setback is, is thirty-five, um. They are seeking C two consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to, try to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Steve, one, one question. On, so there was a subdivision, and it was approved, obviously, with, I guess, two non-compliant lots, you know, and then subsequently, this house was built on it, on one of the lots.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
Okay. All right, um, who is going to present from the applicant's standpoint?
I think, uh, we, uh, we are the owner of the forty-eight Levitt Lane, and me and my husband, I'm Tiananhuang, and.
All right, you know what we'll do then? Um, we will swear you in before you start presenting your application, so if you would both raise your right hand. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, we are the resident of Princeton since, uh, twenty-eleven, and, uh, twenty thirteen, uh, we moved to this house and, uh, um, you know, after their builder subdivided, uh, uh, lot and, uh, they build a house, so we just bought a house, uh, from their builder. And, uh, but when the house was built, I, uh, the deck was not, um, you know, was not constructed, and, uh, um, you know, we, we haven't constructed it since then, and, uh, since the, uh, pandemic, we have a lot of time, uh, staying home, and then we, um, just, you know, thinking about the building a deck and a patio in the backyard, um, but, you know, when we applied the zoning, and we realized, uh, there's actually, uh, limitation on the, uh, setback, and we need to do the zoning variance. Um, actually, I, I can, uh, share the screen, uh, first to share where we located, um. I think, um, currently, we are, um, here is the, our lot, actually.
Excuse me, this, this Karen will be an exhibit?
Um, yes, what we'll do is, do you have, uh, uh, slides to show?
Can you sh- sh- uh, see my, uh, sharing?
I can, I can. What we'll do is all the slides you present tonight, we'll call these exhibit, um, A one. So please continue, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, we actually, you can see this lot has been, uh, subdivided, and we are, um, you know, we, we, our house is there, uh, uh, where? Oh, Levitt Lane. Here, this one. So, and, uh, we are in the, I think, so, R five, and we are very close, it's a formal, um, Princeton borough, and it's actually very close to the, um, border of the, um, uh, previously Princeton Township, and here is the R seven. We're, you know, um, we're very, like, only, um, four, three or four houses, um, uh, uh, near the, uh, zoning R seven, and we had R seven, we realized they, they have their setback only like fifteen feet, uh, rear back, uh, fifteen feet. And also, um, if you look at our, um, um, this is our plan. Here, um, you know, um, we want to, because our backyard originally only, like, only forty feet, um, you know.
We can't, we can't see the plan. You're still on the site.
Oh, really? I cannot see, you, you cannot see? Stop shooting. Shoot again. Uh, okay, uh, can you see the plan now?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, our, our house, actually, uh, when it's built, uh, the setback, it's only about like, um, more than, a little bit more than forty, uh, forty feet. So, um, you know, um, I think the, uh, setback requirement currently is thirty-five, but if you build a patio deck, you can, uh, excluding five feet, so it's, it's like you cannot build a, a deck or patio, uh, more than thirty, uh, less than thirty feet away from the, uh, backyard. Uh, and also, we have windows, actually, uh, in the bay windows in the back of the house, so itself, it's, uh, excluding, uh, you know, extruding, so about like two feet. So if we do not, uh, encroach into the, uh, setback, we, our back is very. we our that is very narrow and we cannot basically use it. Because you if you put up, you know, patio like furniture on there, I think, you know, it's it's harder to move around with the chairs. So currently, we are proposing to have a deck, which is twelve feet wide, which I think is encroached maybe up to two two point two feet and five inches into the requirement, because I see requirement is thirty-five minus five, thirty feet. If you are building a deck or patio. Okay, so and that's the only, you know, request we have. And we want to, you know, if we build a deck, we want to really enjoy it. You know, you know, if without, you know, extending a little bit further, we we feel like the deck is too small. We cannot enjoy much. Also, I want to share the surrounding we have. Let me. Where's the image? But bear with us. It's a forced stream screening. For screen. I know. Can you see this is the backyard, current backyard we have? And this side yard backyard, this is the left side yard. Actually, our neighbor already built a dear, you know, back in the patio, a very further away, even more than the setback we are requesting. I think the setback requirement regulation was introduced maybe several years ago after we built a house. And when they built a house, the setback was not there. But we we have trees, you know, or, you know, here is our backyard. You can see all the tree was planted. You cannot see the neighborhood at all. And this is our right side, other side of the house. So basically, our backyard all surrounded by trees, pretty private already. And as I said, we already have like two bay windows. That's why we wanted the deck to be, you know, extend a little bit. So, you know, if we build a deck, you know, with this windows, you know, out and there, if the deck is too narrow, we we barely, we can barely use it. That's the reason we want to request a setback. I think this is what we want to present. The main thing is first, if without the variance, we basically cannot enjoy what that enjoy enjoy our deck, which narrow, which is very narrow. And the second is, we also feel like we are very close to the border of the zoning R seven, which they have their rear setback only fifteen feet, you know. So we just want the board of our members of the boards can consider our zoning variance required, a request, and allow us to build a deck which we can enjoy. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any other witnesses or you're it?
Uh, we we actually did not think, you know, we 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 started with, you know, just applying zoning and we realized we need a zoning variance. And we go through the procedure and we didn't realize that like very much like we need to present.
No, no, it's it's not a problem. If you have no one else, I'm just asking.
It's the first time in the we, you know, we just realized actually we need to present our material instead of, you know.
You did a good job. You did a good job. You did a good job. Okay, um, if there's no one else, then and do any board members have any question of the homeowners? Okay, then we're going to open this up to the public to see if there's any public comment. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak to this application?
No, no, no one.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion. And we're going to go into executive session now, which means that we discuss it amongst ourselves. So before we do that, do you want to say anything else or are you?
I think, yeah, I finished. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you for the member of the board and we.
No, no problem at all. All right, do any of the board members have any questions or comments on the application? Michael?
Um, you know, I I look at this and the lot is what it is. It actually, depth wise, is a hundred and fifteen feet when only a hundred is required. It's actually longer than required. You know, a certain size house was built there by the owner and cited where they cited. I mean, by the builder, excuse me, and cited it there. And, you know, if it doesn't, for me, it's it's a tough one. You know, it's it's like another bite of the apple. But the benefit is is already in place. So especially with the with the depth being exceeding. So I have a problem with it.
Okay, it seems like the house was could have been didn't need to be set back as far from the street, which would have allowed this to to happen within the required setback.
Yeah, but the house is what it is. So, you know, now if with this limitation, we cannot build a deck. Also, like I said, we already, you know, there's all trees around. And actually, our neighborhood, if you go around our neighborhood, there's a lot of existing house. They have like garage even build, you know, very close to the setback. It's all historic area. And I know currently we have the regulation, but historically, at that, you know, our neighbor, if even our backyard neighbor, they have the garage build right before their rear back setback. And our left neighbor, which had the same, the house built at the same year as we had with the same builder, they had actually on the patio and the deck very further away, you know, or only maybe ten or fifteen away from the setback. We didn't take a picture. We, but you know, if, yeah, if you need it, we can put the pictures with supplemental. Yeah. It's. Yeah, so I think, yeah.
Derek, are you familiar with any of these other houses?
No, I mean, it's been since before the consolidation, it was built. I don't recall the exact perimeter. I'd have to research it.
Okay. All right.
Any other points you made is of two houses away, it's fifteen foot rear setback, which is predominant throughout the whole township. So, you know, it's kind of a weird thing. They have larger lots, but they have smaller setbacks and the borough has smaller lots and larger setbacks.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I don't have a problem with this. I think it's okay. It's two feet, you know.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Especially the way if you see how it backs up to the the property right behind it, it's it's not right up against the the back of that property is not right up against a house.
My Michael, are you worried about anything beyond the obvious, which is setting a precedent? Or I'm just. I mean, I'm just curious. That's that's a negative for sure.
Oh, I I just couldn't defend it for the next application like that.
Yeah.
Especially in a with the excessive depth. And it wasn't a pre-existing nonconforming. It was built on a blank slate.
Right, yeah. But the homeowner did buy it after it was built. Yeah.
And they benefited from the size of the house.
Yes, they did. That's right. Yeah. Yeah. Any other comments? Okay. We, I guess I would ask you as the applicant, if you did want to, we couldn't do it this evening, obviously. Do you want to provide anything else in support of the application? Or are you comfortable with what you've given us already? I mean, because if you, once we vote, then there is a very involved appeal process. So if you do want to have the opportunity to supplement your application, you don't have to. It's your it's your decision. But I want you to understand that that, you know, once we vote, we vote. And there the appeal is a little bit involved. And so if if you did want to supplement the application, then we would have to carry this right now to a future hearing. Or we can just vote on it. I mean, you know, there's, you know, we've had one of our board members is concerned, several others are not concerned. So it's it's your decision. I just want you to understand what the procedure is.
Yeah, I don't. I, yeah, no, I don't think we have a supplemental, you know, materials.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. What do we have the board, you know, when we bought it, so.
Okay. All right. All right, so would someone like to make a motion? And we'll act on this this evening.
I move we accept it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Claudia?
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
No.
Mr. David?
Uh, no.
Mr. Floyd?
No.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, that's that's denied then, so.
I one thought that they could consider moving the deck more to the left and making it narrower. So the projection of the bay window isn't so doesn't get in the way as much because there's it looks as a room to the left. In this image, you could move it that way and make it narrower. Maybe you could maybe you could fit it within the setback. Only one thought.
Yeah, move if we move.
Under those.
I can't hear you.
Under those arched windows more to the left and just kind of maybe you could fit it in. It's gonna still be narrow, but you won't have the projection of the bay windows in your way.
Yeah, we think that way before because.
Sorry, we can't.
I can't hear you. There's something wrong with the volume. We can't hear you.
Oh, I think you are muted.
We muted. We noted it. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Oh, okay. This is what I what I what I propose is if we move to left, what I what we think initially. And it's very close to neighbors there.
Okay.
It's very close, almost like only like a ten feet away. It's very close because the next next neighbor, if we move the beds like a best, the backyard neighbor is their backyard. It's not a house.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Sorry for the denial, but all right, I think we have to move on now. So our next case is Z twenty-one dash one thirty-eight, which is Twenty More Street, block twenty-eight point oh three in the and lot. Can't read it, eighty, is that eighty? Uh, yes, in the R four zone. Karen, can we take jurisdiction of this?
Noticing is in order. You have jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Derek, can you read your mem- summarize your memo?
Yes, Chairman. Margaret Maori is the owner of Twenty More Street. It's located in the former borough in the R four zone. She is seeking a variance to permit construction of a steeper pitched roof at the front of her house, in exception to the required front yard setback. She's seeking a C one variance for that. The house is not complying with regard to the six thousand square foot lot requirement, existing two thousand eight hundred sixteen. It's also not complying with regard to the lot with requirement of sixty. The existing is twenty-five point seven. And the house itself is not complying with respect to the prevailing front yard, which is fifteen. The existing is seven. Impervious coverage exceeds the forty-nine and a half percent maximum allowable. The smaller side yard requirement is eight. The existing is point six feet. The combined side yard requirement is twenty. The existing is one point eight feet. And it's not compliant with respect to the four to one height to setback ratio. The applicant is seeking to remove and reconstruct the existing front porch on the one-story portion of the building facing Moore Street. The design of the roof features a large flat portion, which collects water and is prone to leaking. The proposed roof plan calls for a new roof that starts at the same height as the existing, but it eliminates the flat portion by raising that section. The entire roof is located within the required front yard setback, and the raising of the roof is considered an increase in degree of noncompliance. The required front yard setback is fifteen. The existing is proposed. And this is just simply an increase in that degree of noncompliance within that setback. And they request a consideration under C one. And I'd be glad to address any questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mulray, are you going to present the case?
I think Derek presented it. I.
Ms. Maori, before you say anything else, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Oh, my turn. Okay, what would you like to know?
Well. Well, again, just give us your name and you're the owner of the the house. And just explain what you explain your application. I mean, Derek summarized it, but we'd like to hear from you.
Okay. The it's it's I've been in the house for about probably about fifteen years now. It's a big yellow house that's right across from St. Paul's on the corner of Moore Park. It's in eighteen fifty. We're talking about the front, what would have been the sun porch, which is about eight eight feet by eighteen. It comes down typically as all the roofs do, except the front part of it gullies. It just adds, it slopes down about two feet wide. I've had the roof fixed by roofers twice and it continues to leak. What I found, we found out is that it was because of all the leaks over the last hundred years, I presume, the floorboards have deteriorated in part of the roof. There's actually a hole in one section where it's just mummified underneath those old eighteen fifty boards. What happened now with the last redo of the roof, there's shingles coming down on the part that slopes. And there's, I guess, asphalt coverage in the drain. It's made a perfect ice block, which is probably happened historically. So last March, and it took us a while to figure out what was going on here in the ice storm. I I had an iceberg. So I had to climb out. This is the middle of the night. And it started leaking, pouring gallons of water beyond the other little leaks that have come periodically into my house. Gals like, you know, the the whole ceiling would have collapsed inside my house in the middle of an ice storm. So I actually went up into my bedroom window, hung on for dear life, took a snow shovel and removed the ice block off the top of my roof. You know, or it would have caved in, I guess, because the hole in the roof of the original boards, which I sent pictures into Derek and everything. So he has a picture of the hole. And he he has the architect's plans and he he has pictures of the roof. Which I sent pictures into Derek and everything. So he has a picture of the hole and he, he has the architect's plans and he, he has pictures of the roof. Um, from what I've heard, the heat, and you know all this anyway, the heat coming up from underneath the house now comes up through the hole. And the shingles bring the snow down appropriately and they land in this and it pushes out. And then when it melts, it's going in through the hole of the roof into my house. So I've had a few people when they could, to figure out what was going on with this, you can imagine takes a while. Nobody can, um, you know, try to assess what's happening. And they really said the way, the, the only thing I can, oh, I'm losing you. Are you still there? Oh, okay. Okay.
We hear you.
Is to really just take, I think, um, to give the roof a slightly greater pitch to alleviate this leaking problem. And so it was suggested that I should get a continuous slope. Because right now, the front part of that gully is underneath the roof. So by putting even the continuous slope in the roof, it would look like everybody else's roofs in the whole town primarily. And you wouldn't even see it from the street. Right now, this part of the roof is like dug under even where the. Exterior is, you know, it's almost like a bathtub going underneath your roof. It's weird.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's the house. Y'all know the house. Yeah, and that's the house. It's the, on the corner of Moore Park.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
That's the roof. That's what's there now. And that's my hole in my roof. And there's probably more. We look around as we really start to search for, there's more deteriorated boards. I just, they just were the leak for a hundred years.
Ms. Mulray, did you take these photos?
I did.
You did. Okay. Well, why don't we make these an exhibit for you? We're gonna call this Exhibit A one. I know you already submitted them, but we'll give it a label now for tonight. Okay.
Do you want to share the drawing that you had prepared so the board members can see it? They do have it in their packet, but in case. There's anyone from the public who would like to see it.
Claudia, do you have it? I guess the architect's drawing?
Yes.
You have it? I don't, I don't know how to do that.
I think we all, we, we, I, I'm just doing it for the benefit of the public. If there's someone there who's interested.
I did it. I did it. This is what you're looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, um. Okay, um, I think you put that very eloquently.
Thank you.
So, um. You have a water problem. Um. Okay, uh, do any of the board members have any questions for the applicant? Okay, um, do you have anything, Ms. Mulray, that you want to add? And then we'll open it up to the public for comment?
No.
Okay, all right. So I'd like to open the public portion of the hearing. Claudia, has anybody indicated a desire to speak?
Nope, no one.
Slow night here. Um, okay, we'll close the public portion. Ms. Mulray, we're gonna go into executive session where we discuss it. Amongst ourselves. Do you want to say anything before we do that?
No.
Okay, okay, board members. Um, what's your pleasure? Any comments, questions, or motions? I think this, oh, go ahead, please.
I was just wondering, I might have missed it. Did Derek mention that Elizabeth Kim did, did review this too? I believe there, there was a memo too for that.
Yeah, Elizabeth's here. She said that I don't think they had any issues, but.
Right.
Thank you for bringing that up, Michael.
Yeah, I think she said it. You couldn't even see it from. The, the difference, so.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, my understanding from the drawing, sorry, I don't know if you can see me. Okay, let's see. Um, my understanding from the drawing is that the roof line is gonna stay where it is, which is right below the second floor. And just be a continuous slope down and it's not gonna really make any visual difference to the, to the.
You won't see it at all.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. I agree. Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, Michael. Anybody else like to add anything? Okay, if someone would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, it's, I don't know who did what. Did? Okay, all right. And then George, you seconded it. Okay.
Yep.
Um. Okay, um. Claudia?
Second the motion again?
Second was Mr. Stein, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Okay, well. Thanks for coming in. Good luck with your roof. Get it fixed.
So much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Okay, um, moving right along, our last hearing of the evening.
So you can.
I'm sorry. Okay, our last hearing in the evening is case number Z twenty dash twenty-one. Uh, or Z twenty, twenty twenty-one dash eight oh five. Um, one seventy-six Edgerstone Road, block ninety-three oh eight in the lot one in the R two zone. The Hun School. So, um. Who, well, first of all, do we have jurisdiction, Karen?
Oh, you do. The board does have jurisdiction. Jim, I just wanted to ask you, are you gonna participate? You had recused yourself previously last.
Yeah, it'd probably be a good idea if I recuse myself, just I live so close to these, to everyone and that's just on the street.
Okay. Thanks, okay, um. Derek, would you like to summarize where we're at on this one?
Yes, sir, um. Yeah, the applicant appeared before the board uh. Last summer and they requested a. Uh, use variance, temporary use variance and site plan application to permit the temporary conversion of the Mason House, a single-family dwelling. That previously served as the head of school residence to a temporary office use to be utilized by the Hun School. Mason School is located in the R two zone and the, the office use is not permitted. Um, the board did approve that application with a stipulation that the applicant return. At this meeting and uh, give an update and they're seeking additional. Uh. Temporary use variance relief. That's, that's the summary as I have it and um, you have any questions? Let me try to answer them. Thanks.
Is it up, is, this is John D. Pasquale. I'm standing in for Rich Goldman tonight as the attorney for the Hun School is. The chairman, is the chairman up next? I saw that he went, um. I guess dark.
Yeah, I'm not sure. John, um, Eve, do you want to take the wheel for a minute?
Yeah, um, I'm not exactly sure. Um, but I will take the wheel and I'll say.
No, I'm back. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, I could hear. I just couldn't see. Um, excuse me. So I, I heard the rest of that, Derek, so we're good.
Good, thanks.
So, um. Who is going to present for the applicant?
Chairman, I will be presenting, um, John D. Pasquale with the law firm, Fabry, Junker, Biddle and Rees. I work with Rich Goldman and I was at the last um. Hearing for this that we had during the summer when the board granted the temporary use variance. Um. I, I can, I, I think it'll be helpful just to give a brief summary, although Derek did provide it. The, the Mason House was the head of school house for the Hun School. Uh, the head of school now resides in what's known as the Johnson House. So the making house, Mason House, under normal circumstances would be vacant. But we have the COVID pandemic and the Hun School has rules and regulations. That come from the governor of New Jersey, the New Jersey Department of Health, Department of Education, CDC, that have. Imposed requirements on how the Hun School has to handle their student body. Um, given that they are a part-time day and boarding school. They have students that live there full time. So when someone seems sick with COVID or is ostensibly sick with COVID or tests positive with COVID, they need space. And room to have the appropriate protocol, protocols for distance and isolation. And unfortunately, the only place on campus where this was feasible to do is in what's called Russell Hall. Uh, the second floor of Russell Hall, which held eleven offices for administrative staff. So, uh, it was an emergency situation. The Hun School created the infirmary on the second floor of Russell Hall. And moved the administrative staff to the Mason House, where, which, which was just sitting vacant. The Mason House sits and I, if, if you'll permit me to share my screen, I have a, a, a very brief slideshow. Just to refresh everyone's recollection of where the Mason House sits.
Sure.
Mr. Deepes, call, you want that marked as an exhibit?
Yes, please.
Okay, Exhibit A one then, okay.
Can everyone, can everyone see it? I'm the.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the, this house right here is the Mason House. It's ostensibly part of the Hun School's campus, although it technically. Is in the R two zone, which is why we needed to request this temporary relief. When, when we asked for this relief, the, the entire premise of it was that it was temporary. We don't, we certainly don't hope to intend to have an infirmary for an extended period of time. Um. That was never part of the plan. We only want this relief insofar as it's needed. So we asked for, uh, I believe it was six months and we said, let's come back and see, you know, how the pandemic is doing and see if it's still necessary. See if the curve has flattened. And unfortunately, it seems like the curve is flattening just along the wrong axis. The cases are going up. Um, we have statistics on that, although I, I don't know that it's necessary. I, I think everyone can, uh, take notice that cases with the Omicron variant are accelerating. Um. So what, what we're doing here is we're requesting an additional nine months. Of relief so that we can be compliant with the zoning code through this school year and our summer programs. And we would reassess. Starting in the fall semester of next year. Um, I, I don't think that asking for an additional nine months is outside the bounds of what a temporary variance would allow. Uh, New Jersey case law does allow for temporary variances. Um, I've, I've, I've identified some cases where the temporary variances lasted up to seven years. Um, so I, I feel like this is a reasonable request. We have on our behalf. Uh, Jim Kyle, planner, who testified earlier tonight, and John Brom, head of school, to give some background and factual information about the Hun School itself. Um. I guess we should swear in, John, and Jim has already been sworn and qualified.
Absolutely, I, uh, I think he's there. I can't, I can't see him on my screen, but, um.
I'm here.
Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I, I think at this point, I will pass it to John to talk about. Uh, the use and the need for this temporary variance and what they're using the. Mason House for and what they're using the, uh, the infirmary for. Um, I, I don't think this will take too long, but I just want to establish that these are. It's a requirement that we continue to have access to these facilities as they are right now.
Great. Thank you, John, and, and thanks to the board members, uh, for hearing us this late at night. Uh, our regular infirmary, uh, in Russell Hall is tiny, uh, really insufficient to our needs. Uh, most of the time, but certainly during the COVID epidemic. It's four rooms that are probably eight by six or eight by eight each. With only one examining room, no place for kids to stay overnight if they need to be isolated. It's usually crowded with kids with the sniffles or, you know, a sprained ankle or who knows what. So you, you just can't do what we need to do for COVID in that little place. And the only place to, uh, make an infirmary that was large enough on a temporary basis to deal with the, the COVID situation was on the second floor of Russell. Which did displace eleven offices, uh, eleven people, uh, in different offices. Uh, we've been very diligent about fighting COVID. Uh, we've worked hard to get our kids vaccinated, but you can't get everybody vaccinated. Because there are health and religious reasons, you can't. Uh, we're still obeying all of the rules from the government and all the recommendations from the authorities about. Distancing and, uh, isolation and testing. Uh, everybody's wearing masks, of course. But we think isolation and testing are two of the most important parts of our effort. And for that, you need, uh, space. Uh, we have tested, uh, to date, we've given nineteen hundred and twenty-six tests. Uh, in the course of this year. So far, we, we test our entire population, a quarter of our entire population every week. And we test the unvaccinated students that we have, uh, twice a week. So that adds up, uh, rather quickly. We have, uh, four, I know, five, uh, additional nursing staff, uh, on hand to, to do that testing. We've had to isolate twenty-nine, uh, boarding students, uh, on an overnight basis, average of two to two and a half days, uh, in isolation. Which we have room for in this clinic. We've had to temporarily isolate a hundred and fifty-two, uh, day students. Uh, until their parents could come pick them up. And we wouldn't have space for any of that without the, the temporary infirmary. We've had, uh, eighteen cases of COVID in our community, among the campus community, and, uh, none of them have spread. Because I think we've been so quick, uh, at identifying and isolating those cases. But if we didn't have this temporary clinic, I think, uh, we'd be in hot water and I think it'd be a real threat to. This, the health of our own kids and their families, many of whom are Princeton residents, by the way, but all of whom are nice kids. So. Be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, John. It, is it time for questions now or would that be after our presentation?
It could be. We could, we could entertain questions now. Do any of the board members have any questions or?
Yeah, I have a question. How many kids run vaccinated?
We have, uh, ninety-six percent of our students vaccinated and we have about six hundred and sixty students, so. Uh, you know, a couple dozen, two or three dozen, I guess, are still unvaccinated. They've all submitted, uh, the forms they need to submit about their religious or medical exemptions. And, uh, we kind of push that to the limit as far as we can legally, because we really want to get all of them vaccinated.
And, and how many COVID cases have you had?
We've had eighteen, which is probably a little more than one a week.
Currently?
Oh, no, none. Uh, I think we have one currently. I'm talking about for the entire fall.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, and I realize it's a separate issue, but since you were giving a status report. Um. On a somewhat related, separate issue, didn't you appear in front of, was a council? On, on the sort of end game for this property?
We did, um, as I mentioned, we, we feel that this infirmary. It, that we currently have, the permanent infirmary we have is really insufficient to our needs for the benefit of our kids. So in the long run, what we're hoping to do is. Move the people who are now housed in Mason House, those office workers, back into Russell. Uh, and vacate Mason House again, but then fill Mason House with an entirely really separate group of, uh, office workers. Who are in a different wing of Russell that would make a wonderful infirmary. That would have enough space for a couple of kids to stay overnight and that kind of thing. So it's not the same people. It's not the same move. But it would also involve the Mason House eventually becoming a permanent infirmary.
Which, which is not what we're requesting at this time.
No, no.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, you know, I, I did catch wind. That you were doing something. I don't know if you were looking for a rezoning. Um, not from us. I realize. Yeah, I just.
And the, part of the, part of the issue in the rezoning application is that it wouldn't just involve the house. There's kind of a, a sloping two-eight. A sloping two acre lot that is a part of that house lot that would also be rezoned. Which I think was the main, um, point of contention.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? John, do you have anything to add before we, uh, would you have any other witnesses or?
I, I do, I do. I have, uh, Jim Kyle, our planner.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, good everyone. Good evening. Uh, ju-just to jump in, I, I think, you know, again, we're, we're seeking extension of the temporary variance that the board granted, um, earlier in the year. So what I wanted to do is just give the board some quick testimony, uh, with respect to this. It was a D variance that was requested at that time. It was temporary in nature. Again, the condition was that we. Come back in six months and update the board and if need be extended. So. As John had noted, this, this property is located in the R2 district, uh, the rest of the schools in the E4. And this property is proximate, um, just east of the campus and is surrounded on three sides, uh, by roadways. So I think with respect to the D variance here, um, you know, the school is squarely in inherently beneficial use. Uh, the legislature amended the municipal land use law in 2009 to include a definition of inherently beneficial use, which specifically includes a school. Uh, and there's no distinction between, you know, public school, private school, just school is what's noted in the definition. And the distinction here is that that kind of changes the considerations for the use variance. Uh, once a use is deemed to be inherently beneficial, it presumptively satisfies the positive criteria in terms of the use variance requirement. Uh, because it's deemed to inherently serve the public good, which is purpose A, the municipal land use law. And the other change here is with the negative criteria. So there's a case. Uh, Supreme Court case called CICA v. Wall Board, uh, Board of Adjustment of Township of Wall. And what the court did in that case was define a four-part test that the board uses to determine if there's any substantial impact to the public good or. Impact to surrounding properties. So I think as we go through that four-part test, the first part is to identify the public interest at stake, realizing that some uses are more compelling than others. Second, identify any detrimental effects that could ensue from the grant of the variance. Third, any conditions that the board can place on the variance to limit those impacts and then obviously reduce the weight if you can put a condition on it. And then finally balance the positive and negative aspects and determine if there's any substantial impact to the, to the public good. So, um, here I think as we go through it, um, the public interest at stake here obviously is, is really at the heart of health and safety. Um, that's the school's ability to meet the state guidelines and protocols for, uh, students that, you know, have to be isolated. Um, that, that's certainly compelling. You know, we, as, as John said, we want to isolate these students and prevent the spread of the virus throughout the school. And really the most effective way to do that is to provide facilities for isolation. Uh, as John described, you know, the existing infirmary is just wholly inadequate to do that. And to make provisions quickly, you know, obviously you can't get approval and build buildings in a timely fashion. So this was. You know, kind of some triage to, to get a protocol in place and, and a, and a program in place that would address this. Uh, given the presence of boarding students, again, they might not be able to isolate at home, so we have to make provisions for that here on campus, that, you know, students that. Are here from overseas can't just travel home, particularly if they have COVID. Um, so really it, this grant of the variance allows the school to reorganize existing space and provide the needed facilities to, to limit the spread of the virus. You know, which at its heart is, is a real public health issue. Um, so I think the public interest here is, is pretty compelling. Um, any negative, potential negative detrimental effects, um. Again, the Mason House has really functioned as part of the school, although it was a residence. Uh, the, the employees will be limited to a maximum of 10. Um, and those employees are working, you know, regular Monday to Friday, eight to four. So there's nothing really happening. Uh, in that facility that would be outside of what we consider normal business hours and, and certainly not on weekends. So that'll kind of tend to limit the impact. On adjacent properties. The entrance to the Mason House is on the west side of the building. So it, it faces the campus and it's away from the residential units that are located to the east. So a lot of the activity is focused on the west side away from that. And that's mainly the coming and going of employees, uh, you know, maybe leaving for lunch, coming and going a couple of times a day. So we can really effectively limit any potential impact to those, uh, neighbors by using that entrance on the west side. And I think, um, you know, again, the grant of this variance is temporary. Um, certainly, gosh, I hope we're not back here in nine months talking about this again, but it, you know, of course is a possibility. And that, that temporary nature of it will really tend to limit those, uh, impacts and make sure that they're not long-term. We also have the benefit of, of this protocol being in place for the last six months. We're not aware of any issues or complaints. Um, you know, no nuisance or, or anything else that, that really would lead us to believe that this is impacting any of the neighboring properties in any significant way. Um, in, in terms of conditions, again, I think as John De Pasquale said, we'll agree to come back and revisit this in nine months. We can certainly see where we're at. Um, and I think, you know, that would be reasonable. Uh, but other than that, of course, we're open to any suggestions the board may have on this issue. And in terms of balancing, I think, you know, when you look at this really compelling public health issue that we have here. Um, you know, some relatively minor potential impacts that I think on balance, the, the positives far outweigh any detriment here. And, uh, we can meet the, the, the CICA test here and, and the analysis would be that there's no substantial detriment to any of the surrounding properties. I think finally, um, just to address any potential impact to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, again, the temporary grant of the use variance here helps us address a public health issue. Uh, I don't think it'll certainly rise to the level of impairing the intent of the master plan. Uh, as, as John De Pasquale pointed out in the denim that was submitted. Uh, there was a court case Bell Atlantic v. Riverdale zoning that, um, upheld the trial judge's determination that a grant of a use variance for seven years. Was certainly a temporary nature and, and the court's finding in that case was that. You know, there was no substantial impairment to the intent of the zone plan or to the public good. In that case, given that the duration of it was, was somewhat limited. Um, the other thing to point out too is that, you know, private schools are. Conditionally permitted in the R2 zone. So, you, you know, there is some precedent, certainly. And we look at Princeton Academy, the Sacred Heart is, is located in the RA RB district. There are conditional use standards that are in place. Certainly this site itself could not function as a, as a school, but. Uh, there is some precedence in the zoning to conditionally allow these uses in the residential zones. So it's, you know, it's not so far out in left field, um, you know, as one might think. So I think given the temporary nature of the relief that we're seeking, again, the condition that will come back in nine months, uh, I don't think that there'll be any substantial impairment to the intent of the zone plan as a. A result of the grant of, of a temporary variance here, or rather continuation of the temporary variance. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I have a question. If this is the use of the Mason House is being driven by the, the requirement of the infirmary basically. And is that if the, if the COVID restrictions are lifted. Would the infirmary then close and those employees be returned to the other building?
Yes, I think John, John Brown, you have thoughts on this?
Uh, yeah, sorry, John. Yes, that would be the plan. Um.
So in theory, if, if things cleared up somewhat quicker than nine months, then. Everything would, uh, the, the house would be vacated again?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so, so this is all a function of the state of emergency and those requirements. So if by chance. And I'm, I'm, I would hope it would be lifted, but nobody knows. And so if it does, then, then the house would sit. Vacant again until such time as anything you've, you proposed to the council or anyone else is resolved.
Yeah, you know, the only, um. The only thing is that I'm not sure that there's still technically a state of emergency. But I, I noticed on the, um, agenda, it mentioned the state of emergency, but. My understanding is that it, that that has ended in that, at the moment, it's just that the government. The governor continues to maintain emergency powers. I don't even know what that distinction means, but. I, I don't, I'm not sure if the end of the state of emergency would be the right deadline, um.
Well, that's, that's not, my understanding and I. Is that the health emergency state has been lifted by the governor, but that he is still maintaining through executive orders. Some form of a state of emergency. So, but, but in terms of. Whether the HUN school would, uh, vacate the Mason House earlier. The, the, the duration of the variance would be nine months, meaning, I mean. If, if they found basis and they could vacate it, we, we're hearing they would. But either way, they'll be coming back then. In September to advise us to status. If, if they have vacated everyone, they could let the zoning officer know. Every, you know, that building is vacant. We don't want to come back. We don't need to come back. But I, I agree with, uh, the head of school. Not sure. I don't know if tying it to the state of emergency, because right now doesn't, it's not a health emergency. It's just a state of emergency.
Well, I guess my question related to what Michael had mentioned is happening. At the council level or at the planning board level, but I, I is, once the, once the. The, in the increase or the infirmary isn't necessary anymore. Um, I guess that's basically what I'm getting to. Once the, once there's no need for the infirmary, then the offices can go back into that space. And the house can be vacated again until other approvals are in place or whatever is, is resolved on that property.
Yeah, I, I don't, we certainly don't have any interest in keeping the, this temporary situation. Any longer than we need to. It's just, I have a feeling at this point, it's based a lot on expert advice and what the doctors are saying and what the. The medical recommendations are more than a state of emergency. I guess that's.
Okay, I guess maybe I was incorrect in saying state of emergency, but I guess it's, it's all a function of how the infirmary functions. And when that changes, then the use of the house will change.
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That was the only question I had. There any other questions from any board?
I have a, I have a question. Um, I was wondering about your thinking of. Um, it being, uh, nine months, uh, rather than maybe just going through this academic year, like going six months. It, um, just thinking about, I just wondered about that.
So John, do you want to talk? I think that has to do with summer programs, correct?
Yeah, you know, I think it's anyone's guess about when this whole problem will abate. Uh, it, it would be, uh. It's just thinking that rather than come back here repeatedly, if it, if it seems like Omicron and the. Pandemic is going to be with us for a while, then we definitely will need, uh, some infirmary help with our summer programs, because we'll have campers and probably resident kids here for that as well. It just seemed like a. A, a reasonable timeline to us, I guess.
Steve?
Yes, Michael.
Um, you know, just, uh. In Richard Goldman's letter, he actually in writing asked for till, till December 31st.
Yeah, a year. They wanted a 12 month, yeah.
So, you know, we need to clarify that too. Is it the written request? Is it going to be nine months? So while we're.
Actually, I remember, I thought I'd seen that and then I couldn't find it. But yeah, I, I did see that.
And one other thing, it may be as, um, as we move further in this application, maybe if, if, uh. If it gets to the point that, uh, we are considering a positive vote, if. Then one of the conditions might be that if you do, if you do change the status of the infirmary. When, when and if that changes, you would notify, uh, Derek of that.
That would be very, of course, we, yeah, we definitely could do that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Deepes quality, is it nine months or a year that the school is seeking for them?
I, I did not know, I did not. I did not know that Richard Goldman's most recent letter said December 31st. December 31st sounds good to us. We would prefer not to crowd your agenda with this every six months. Um, it's, it's like, it's, it's anyone's guess whether it'll be. Still needed then or not. If it's not needed, we would be, and John Brown can correct me if I'm wrong. But if it's not needed in six months or nine months, we would be happy to, to relinquish the right because it's just simply not needed anymore. Um, it's, it's, it's really on an as-needed basis. Um, that's, that's, we're, we're not trying to, to use this to put a foot in the door for something else. It's, it's for the limited purpose that we ask.
Go ahead, Donna.
I have a question, um, gentlemen, about the number of employees. That will be using the Mason House. I think you said 10. Was that the same number as the last time you wanted the temporary variance?
I, it is the same number, but I'm afraid it is 11. I'm, I'm quite sure. I'm sorry, gentlemen, if we sent you the wrong.
Hold on, no worries.
Yeah.
Well, I think the, the resolution that was previously adopted referenced 11.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if it's still 11 or not, but.
It, it, it is. I just counted today.
Okay.
Okay, so what, what do we want to do going back to the, the, uh, the period of the additional extension here? Do we want to, what, what do you want to do? Is it 12, nine months or 12?
I mean, I, 12 months saves us from having to come back. In September and say that we still need it sooner than we would have to ask you. I mean, I. And I, I think we could agree to a condition where if it's no, if we're not using the infirmary anymore, we would waive the right to the temporary variance. It's no longer needed as an infirmary. Um, so if, if the board is willing to grant the 12-month extension, I think we could agree to that condition. And, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Just a, a question so that if you come back in December, you're. Um, and you've already had one semester or you're in the middle of your year. So. I'm assuming that trying to make changes then is not very easy. So you either have committed and you still. You've committed from September and you've said, well, we need it and we're using it. And we're not going to change it because we're in the middle of the year. So I don't know from the board's perspective, if having the school come back. Um, I don't know when your year starts. I don't know if it would be August, not September, because you need to know what are you doing for the coming year? That perhaps, uh, perhaps if you, if what you tell the board is that things didn't get better. And you need the whole school year now. Uh, I don't know if that's, might be more helpful to the school, because now you have a whole year you can plan for instead of you're in the middle of the year. And now, I mean, I think everybody's hands are kind of tied then. I mean, in the middle of the year, what are you going to do?
It's, it's a good.
Basically, you have to get the extension again because you don't have any other options. You can't plan for anything because the year is halfway over.
I don't think the move would be all that disruptive, as I say. I think it would be much more difficult if it were student spaces and they had to be moving classrooms and all that classroom. Essentially, we just moved these folks out of one space and put them into, you know, bedrooms and, and, uh, dens in this house. Uh, that could almost happen any time of year because they're not on the same cycle as kids. So. But.
Ms., Ms. Casey, to your point, uh, not contradicting anything, uh, John Brown is saying. Uh, to your point, we offered to come back to the board really as a gesture of good faith, saying that we're not trying to do anything other than. Accommodate this infirmary that we need. Um, and New Jersey case law shows that temporary variances have been. Upheld and deemed temporary that have lasted far, far years, you know, not just months, but years. And we're not asking for that. We're, we're really asking it just for our limited purpose, which, which we, I think, discussed already.
Michael?
We still have to hear from the public, don't we?
Yeah, we still have to open it up to the public.
Yeah, they may have something to say too.
Sure.
Uh, will I get a, do I get a brief statement after the public?
You will.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Uh, so any more questions from the board of the applicant? Okay, um, Mr. Pasquale, would you like to say anything before we open it up to the public portion of the hearing? You'll have an opportunity after the public portion closes once again.
Okay, no, nothing before the public portion now.
Okay, all right. Um, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Uh, Claudia, do we have anyone out there?
Yes, Mr. Alan Paylook.
Okay, all right. Mr. Paylook, if you can unmute yourself and. Mister Paylook, if you can unmute yourself and maybe turn your monitor on.
My apologies, that was an aberration of Zoom accounts confusion. Ellen Pollak became Ed Fenwick and actually was always Ed Fenwick.
Can you put your video on, Mister Fenwick, because we can't see you?
Few have complained about that.
There you are. Uh, if you would give us your address and then we will swear you in.
Hi, my name is Ed Fenwick and I live at one zero two Russell Road in Princeton.
All right, and do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I have, really, I just have two questions, both of them for the head of school, Mister Brown. John, my first question is around this. Issue of the infirmary and and I I thought I would, after you first spoke, I thought I was understanding it. Then after everybody else jumped in, I understand it less. Um, I for one believe there are many more variants that are probably going to come our way. I I. I'm not optimistic at all that nine months, maybe even nine years, that COVID nineteen and its multiple variances are going to be behind us. And the needs for the school to attend to their children, the students. So even if, even if that pandemic does end. I think the harsh reality of this COVID nineteen pandemic has taught us that. New pandemics are a real and present threat that need to be handled. And I'm assuming the school will want to be more prepared. For a next one if it happens than it was for the, any of us were for the left for this current one. Added to that. That the school has long stated that our facilities were not adequate. Without a pandemic, that we needed to expand and improve the existing infirmary. Now, I don't have, I don't have any idea what happened, what was done. In Russell House to make it. An a bigger infirmary. But my, so my question is. Does the school really plan at some point to contract back to an old shrunken infirmary that didn't meet your needs? Or the meeting is of students without a pandemic? In the face of. It just doesn't make sense to me that. The school would do that. And so could you share thoughts on that?
Absolutely, yeah, uh. We would like to have a bigger infirmary. You're very right about that, but we would contract back to that. Obviously, a temporary variance is not the way to. Get a a permanent. Uh, larger infirmary and. Where our present temporary infirmary is, is not the right place for an infirmary in the long run anyway. It's up on the second floor. Kids have to go up. You know, these massive Russell Hall staircases to get there. Uh, which doesn't work for kids on crutches or, you know, sometimes you have an ambulance case or something, so. We have a place picked where we think an infirmary could be at some point, but it's an entirely different place. Uh, and the the people who are currently, who are currently. Vacated from Russell. Aren't anywhere near that place. They're going to have to go back to where they are. And we're gonna have to do a whole other arrangement that will recall, require extensive remodeling in order to build a good permanent infirmary, so. We don't see what we're doing now is having any possibility for being an infirmary for the long run.
Thank you. Yeah, I I think, John, you, I think you answered my second question, which is going to be. What is your current thinking? Now, I I was assuming that the answer is going to be now, we we really need to keep a bigger infirmary going for. Even if. Emergencies are passed or whatever, I I quite honestly, I don't think this would be responsible for a school to. Contract back to pre pandemic capabilities, but. You you know better what you're doing. So my second question was. What is your current thinking about how you? Absorb back onto the campus, the employees that are. In the temporary housing.
Well, once we are able to clear out that temporary clinic from the top floor and. Uh, our temporary nursing staff is gone and we don't need the overnight COVID. Uh, isolation rooms and all that's passed. Those rooms are still just. Going to be ready as they were for those people to occupy. Just before they left at the beginning of the pandemic. So they would just move back to where they were on the second floor of Russell.
Thanks, John. Those are my two questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia, do we have anybody else?
Uh, yes, Charlotte Friedman.
Miss Freeman, could you give us your address, please?
Um, yes, it's one oh two Russell Road.
And do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for staying so late. I I know this is painful. And I just wanted, I appreciate, I just want to say first that I really appreciate Mister Floyd's acknowledging. Um, and pointing out the the kind of the end game upon that was put forth in the town council meeting and. I feel a little bit like this is a slip, sort of a case of slippery slope. Like we'll, we'll get the temporary variance extended and then we'll get a na 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 and just, just kind of keep chewing away, so. I do appreciate just at least acknowledging that. The other thing is the the map and perhaps next time, you know, we can have our own map to show you. Because I I do feel like that map is. Leaves out an entire half of the neighborhood and it positions. Sort of hun on on the edge. Of the neighborhood and you can kind of see a couple houses there. There's a whole swath. Hun is really embedded in this neighborhood and. It's a residential zone, as Mister Kyle said. So that, you know, last, last time we met at the town council, I spoke about misleading language and. I think these are misleading graphics. What's also absent from that map are the cars. Which in this case. There are ten, eleven, I guess eleven employees in the Mason House and. I I don't know, now there are cars that stretch down the hill, the Wyonet Hill, that park there almost every day. So it's, I I mean, it looks a little pastoral in in the map. It's quite frankly not. And so I just wanted to add those things and. Also just say that I do really appreciate having Hun as a neighbor and I. Have, you know. No problem with that and have always valued them as a neighbor, but I just think we have to. Be clear about our boundaries and that that is a, you know, in fact, a residential lot that that. You know, I can't tell them to sell it off as a residential lot, but. But that is what it is. So thank you for hearing me at this late hour.
Thank you for speaking. Claudia, do we have anyone else?
Nope, there's no one else.
Hey. All right, so at this point. We'll close the public portion of the hearing and. Mister Deepes, well, if you'd like to say something before we go into executive session.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Just very briefly, I think the board has already considered. The need for this temporary use and evaluated the positive and negative criteria at the previous meeting. Uh, none of the. None of those reasons and none of those justifications have changed since then. Um, the. The posturing here, and this is really the final point, the posturing here is that we agreed to come back to say, you know, what's the status report? Where do we stand now? And the fact of the matter is. We don't stand much differently than we did six months ago. Um, we are, we still find ourselves in the same situation, subject to the same constraints and hardships that we had before. Um, we're evaluating ways to handle this long term, but in the meantime, we need to handle it short term. Which is why we're only seeking temporary relief. Um, I. The. The university itself has gone to. Remote exams, as I'm sure you all have seen. Uh, the cases are going up. It's not a situation where we can walk away from it and we're willing in good faith to revisit it. Um, at a reasonable period of time, so that the board does not feel like we're. Taking more leash than is appropriate.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so let's go into executive session and board members. What's your? Feeling on this?
Uh, I'd just like to make a comment that six months ago. Everybody was quite optimistic. That the disease. Would be in the rearview mirror. It's very much not in the rearview mirror now. And to me, the need is is more pressing than it was when we first. Made a six months temporary variance. So I'm in favor of this.
Okay. I would, I would tend to agree with you. I don't think it's something that right now that any of us have any idea. How long it's going to last. But.
So did we clarify is it nine or twelve that we're talking about?
I would vote for twelve.
Well, it works for us.
With conditions.
And the conditions, how would we clarify that exactly?
If if they vacate earlier. It ends.
Right, but on what basis?
The infirmary, if they're not using the infirmary. Or the increased size of the infirmary.
Right.
They would notify Mister Berger and and. And vacate the use of the house.
No, I'm I'm just, and I'm not, I'm I'm. I agree with what everyone is saying. I'm just saying, how would we?
How do we police?
It's no, well, okay, um, we're. Because there was just a little bit of, I think we're all a little bit unsure about. The, you know, emergence that what was brought up earlier about the emergency. How would that be defined? Or we, well, I guess it would be, they'll see that they have, would it be, you know? We don't need that much space, because we don't have any, any people who are having to be quarantined. Maybe it's as simple as that.
Well, I mean, I think Eve, the. The point you're raising is a good one and. The. Unless something was put in the extension of the temporary experience that has a standard now. Other than simply that. The school determined that. They don't need it anymore. Either they've made other arrangements or the the. COVID infection rate has finally. Uh, gone to a point where. The standards from the state are, you don't need to isolate, everything's fine, everything is back to what it was. In the absence of any standard, you're right. It would simply be the only, the restriction would be that the applicant has to come back. Whether it's nine months or a year. And update you now in terms of where they are. It's, I suppose you could tie it to whether there's still some form of a state of emergency under the governor's executive orders, but. You know, I, I think it's a little different, difficult to. Determine. What exactly that means, because in this climate. You might think there's that the health emergency would be reinstated, but to my knowledge, it has not. So it's simply, right now, if you look at the most recent executive order. It still says there's no health, but there's still. A state of emergency.
I'm sorry, I I'm I'm missing something here. Are you making a proposal?
What I'm saying to Eve is that she's asking. What standard is there going to be?
Right.
And I'm saying. There really isn't one. The standard is simply. If the school determines that either they find other space on campus and they don't need to use Mason House anymore. Or. Things improved considerably and they decide they don't need to use Mason House anymore. Then they will cease doing it. Otherwise, the the restriction on them is come back in a year. And update the board as to what you're doing. That, I mean, that's it. There isn't anything else, and that's why. What I was saying to Eve is. Yes, you you could tie it to this, you could say as long as there's state of emergency, you can use it, but.
We don't know if that's a good criteria to use.
Exactly, because it's hard to figure out. I, my understanding is that state of emergency is to give the governor certain powers. That he, that they lifted the. Uh, health emergency, but kept. Some kind of control so that if the governor needed to. Reactivate things he could, that he hadn't given up. All of the control he has as governor. Over this situation.
But it's almost like, it's almost like a good faith effort. A good faith gesture on the part of the of the school, if they're ceasing to use the. The increased size of the infirmary, then they would come back and tell us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming they're doing that, they would do that because they found something better on campus to use, and that's why they decided to vacate that. Space that they figured out something else.
Maybe. I'd like to ask the question, if I could, of either Mister Deepes or Mister Brown, and that is internally, what would you regard as the time to turn it back?
It's a difficult standard, it's a, it because most of the. Guidance we're getting is from doctors, epidemiologists and pediatricians and people like that and. I don't know exactly when they're going to say. You don't need to test or, you know, worry about isolation anymore. But we we don't, we're not going to try to keep it any longer than we really need it for COVID, because we're right now, I think we were paying. Two hundred thousand dollars a year for these extra nurses. That we don't need in normal times, you know, and. We we don't have any interest in keeping it when the medical advice says we don't need to anymore, I guess is all I'm saying. But I can't, I don't know a good objective standard. I've been trying to think of one too.
Uh, I I would echo what John's saying. I think the the correct standard would not be a. A political standard like state of emergency, it's it's really, what is the medical advice that the school is getting and is the infirmary actually used? Which is why we thought a timely return was the best. Stop to this. And stop, we'll say status check.
Maybe one of your neighbors will. Make a donation and build an infirmary for you.
I like that idea. I like that idea.
Well, they think you're a good neighbor, so maybe they'd like to do something for you.
I'll ask.
I'm ready to vote on this. Can we make a, can we, can I make a motion that we approve it?
Well, one, just one quick second, Michael. I mean, does anybody else want to comment? I see Michael raising his hand.
Yeah, I wanted to comment. I. I support the the one year extension. I would hope, actually, I wish you had some. Kernel of a thought on. Your next infirmary, since it seems. There's going to be a new infirmary sometime down the line, COVID or not. And, you know, I don't mean this as a threat, but. A year from now, if you say you don't know. You're not working on an infirmary. When you say you need one COVID or not. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a problem with this. I would, I would hope. You're working on ideas for a new infirmary now. And you could come back a year from now and say. Hey, we already got that emotion and we'll be done with it in six months. But to say, and not you, but to say, well, we can go out to seven years and court cases and. Inherently, yeah, it's, that'll be a tough one for me.
I I understand, and you know, I think the two roots would be. In some way, getting a permanent variance, which would be a whole different application or. Getting the, receiving the zoning request and getting something through there in a way that is not displeasing to the neighbors. So those things are on our minds for some future time, but that's not what's involved with this one. This is purely. The temporary thing.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I would have liked to heard something. In the words now, and I definitely would like to hear it a year from now, if you come back from an extension.
Fair, fair enough.
Board, board members, with respect to Mr. Schreiber's motion, with the last variance, the applicant, there was a state certain for them to return. It was a smaller time period, though. And they were not obligated to give notice. They did give notice by first-class mail as a courtesy to the neighbors. Since it's a year from now, are you asking them to provide formal notice now? The normal notice, you know, certified mail, put the notice in the paper.
I would, I would think so at this point, if it's a year out from now.
And then I guess what we would do is we would set an expiration date for this. And then it will be on the applicant to come back in, tell Derek that we're coming back in, we want to update the board. Here are materials we're going to let the board look at and take care of their noticing. Because the last time we gave them a date, we said, well, you must return by our December 15th meeting and update us. But now we're going out a year, so I think it probably makes sense to require the formal noticing, certified mail and publication. And then do you, do you just want to set a date to say they must return prior to, and it can't be the end of December because, you know, you won't be meeting then. So, I don't know, Claudia, I think you have, you've got the meeting dates. I can't put my hands.
It's either November 9th or December 14th.
Okay.
Well, I think before that, I think, you know, probably a month or two before that, I assume the school is going to have an idea what they're going to do. So, maybe they can let Derek know at that point that they will be coming in again. So, we're not waiting to the last minute. I mean, they can, they can apply and notice later, but they should notify Derek beforehand about their intention.
So, so the extension within the 31st, but the notice would be a different earlier date.
Well, I don't know, would it, would it, would we, could we allow them to notice? Typically, you, you know, it's 10 days before, but could it be two months before or a month before? Would that still be a valid notice?
Well, I mean, a month before would be a valid notice. The issue with the noticing is what meeting are you appearing at? That's the whole point of the notice. So, you either would say, I want to appear on November, whatever, or December, which would be the last meeting of the board for the year. So.
They don't want to come to us in December and be turned down. They're going to have to have a planning, they're going to have to have a plan.
Exactly.
So, they have to come.
I'm sorry, Michael, you said it's November 14th?
I'll give you three days. There's October 26th or November 9th. And the later date is December 14th, October 26th. And before that is September 28th.
And they might be coming back to us and asking for a further extension.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
And so, so in, in light of all the comments, it may make more sense to ask them to come back in October, because if by chance we turn it down, they're going to have to make alternate arrangements.
All right. So, the applicant would then be directed that they must notice, only notice and appear no later than the October 26th agenda 2022 to advise the board as to the status of their needs and are they seeking to further extend this temporary. All right. And that's what we will do.
Yeah, I, I think that makes more sense because, again, as you said, if by chance it's, if it's turned down, they'd have to make alternate arrangements. We can't expect them to do that in December when, when the, when the extension expires, it has to be before to make it realistically possible.
Okay. And are, do you want to frame this, though, that this variance is extended until December 31st? But they must appear no later than October 26th to advise the board as to status? I mean, it's in their interest anyway to do that.
Exactly.
Helpful to wait and then say, oh, I guess it ran out, so.
Well, that gives them a reasonable amount of time to vacate if they have to.
Well, actually, they'll appeal the counts.
Yeah.
The next thing is to appeal them, their mayor and council.
Yeah.
If, if we turned it down.
If we turned it down, sure.
Yeah.
But at least it gives them the opportunity to come back in and, and we'll, we'll have the status and, again, they can address your comments, too.
Okay.
All righty, so with those conditions attached to it, Steve, is that acceptable to your motion? Are you comfortable with those additions?
I am.
Okay.
And I so move.
All right.
Hey, we needed, we need a second discussion and then we can vote.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion or where should we vote? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
No, 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 wait. I don't think Donna. We have one, two, three, four. No, Donna can't vote. She hasn't been voting tonight because we have enough. Oh, I can, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I apologize. You're absolutely correct. Okay.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Happy holidays.
Take care.
Okay, board members and everybody, and have a good holiday and a happy new year and we'll start again in January.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Bye, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
All right. Dave, you came back.
I was here the whole time.
He never left.
Okay, see you guys.
Good night, good night. Happy holiday.
You too. Thanks. See you, Eve. Coffee, Eve, sometime.
Yeah.